Yeah, absolutely.
I'll announce it in a minute. We're gonna start soon anyway. Alright, so we've got 6:15, so we'll call the meeting to order, so everyone knows the meeting is being recorded. Ian, can everybody hear okay? You wanna do a sound check with anybody on there? It did run? Oh, perfect, okay. Alright, great. So, let's see, let's see, so looking for a motion to accept the public and non-public minutes of October 14th. Two seconds?
Yeah, whoever.
Alright, so motion in a second. Any discussion?
I have just one or two thing.
Sure.
Under the COVID update, the second paragraph from the bottom where we talk about with the board. Hold on a minute. On the other, the back of that page, I'm sorry, so the, the top of page three, maybe? Where it says, "Discussion on Having A Protocol In Place For The Benchmark." Where at the end of that paragraph, it said, you know, "The Board agrees on the importance of having a proactive plan." It doesn't say what the plan is, so I, I would suggest that we state what the plan is, that the, that we would go, that we would shift to remote learning district-wide for 10 days with the occurrence of one case in the district.
I agree, I think that's important.
Oh, sorry, and then on the previous page, this is where I was gonna say first.
Isn't that right here where we said we made the motion, 10 days, one case? Do you want to state it again, Holly, in there?
I don't know, I'd like, I mean, it's up to everybody, but I just think having it there in case people don't read down, you know, just don't zone in on the motion, because it kind of blends in, but, I mean, I don't know, that would be up to what other people think.
I mean, it's kind of important, I don't think it hurts to.
No, I just felt like it might be a little redundant, just because it's right there in the motion, the next paragraph, but it doesn't matter.
Yeah, I mean, I don't really care, I just, you know. And then the other part, and I don't think it was in the motion. Let me just see. No, so the previous page, the second last paragraph from the bottom where Wayne presented the option about going remote for the period of time, it said, "Questions Were Asked And Answered." We don't, do you think it should note the board's decision that we decided, you know, not to go with that plan? Because it's just kind of left open that Wayne presented it, and then, or... On the previous page, so that's the one I wanted to start with, and then I got myself sidetracked.
Probably, yeah, to clarify that too. Because then it will say where we landed on it.
Yeah, exactly, so people don't read, if they read it, they don't read it and say, "Well, are we going remote?"
Right.
For, you know, that month. So, yeah, so just something to the effect of, you know, the board decided to, I don't know how you wanna say it, Anne, but basically not. Yeah. Alright, that was it.
Does anybody have anything else? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the public and non-public minutes as amended for October 14th, say aye. Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, so first item up is the basketball discussion, so Sam, I assume you're gonna head that up?
First, I'd just like to thank you, say thank you to the board, from all the athletes, parents, and coaches, for allowing us to compete this fall. I personally feel like it went very well. I talked to a colleague today on the phone, who was going to his school board later this week. They asked him to call DHHS to talk about, you know, if there was any transmission from school to school due to athletics, and there was none reported. So I thought that that was very important to bring up before we get into the protocols for basketball. The protocols for basketball are basically the same as the fall, the masks when not, when not participating. The different, inside's gonna be a little bit easier, I believe, for COVID. Team benches are gonna be opposite of spectators, we're gonna talk about spectators in a minute. Each athlete is gonna have an X six feet apart, so I am going to go through and measure out six feet, put a box, and that's where the athletes are going to sit. Spectators, we are not gonna do visiting spectators, I worry that they're gonna take our athletes' parent spots. Each instant athlete will be allowed two spectators per game, those spectators must be family members of the athlete, and they'll be given, the students will be given tickets to have the game to bring home to those parents or their family members that are going to the game. They must have them to be admitted into the gymnasium. They will have their temperatures taken before they enter the gym, they will answer a COVID-19 screening questionnaire before they are allowed to enter the gym. Because we're inside, I think we should do contact tracing, so that if there is a case, then we can contact those people. Just give us your cell phone number for that. We will do the same thing as the player benches and put X's six feet apart in the spectator section. The balls must be sanitized before the game, during timeouts, and between every court. So I will have to take a ball in between all those times, put a sanitizer on it, or get two balls going, so I can throw one in, sanitize the other one, and throw the other one in. The visiting team is gonna have to bring their own basketballs for warmups, so the school will not be providing balls to other schools for warmups. Teams will not travel further than an hour and a half away, and they're gonna, they're gonna do a phase kind of ass way of this basketball. So Phase 1 is the skills and drills that start November 30th, Phase 2 will be the practices, they start December 14th, and the first day to play will be January 11th. With the skills and drills, the maximum amount of athletes you can have in the gym is five at a time, per the NHIAA. All these were taken from the NFHS, and everything else is about the same as the fall. We will still play the schools that we played in the fall, and see where we go from there.
Who has questions for Sam? Who wants to go first?
I have questions, but somebody else can go first if you want.
You wanna go round robin? Jim, you're up.
Yeah, so I guess my only question is, if high schools shut down for COVID-related reasons, is basketball shut down?
I would propose that if it is not an athlete, then we continue to practice, we won't play games, but we continue to practice. If it's an athlete, obviously, we will be shut down, but I would propose that we continue to practice if it's not an athlete that was, had the COVID-19.
Okay, and if it happens, like, while you're playing games, what do you think?
Pack up and go home. I mean, our team.
If it happened, if we shut down the school during, during the basketball, actual games, or something like that, see?
I would probably propose that we continue to play if it's not, again, if it's not an athlete that was, had COVID, then I would suggest that we continue to play, that doesn't mean that we need to. Again, same as the fall, there is no penalty from the NHIAA if you have to pull out of competitions, or you cannot finish the remainder of your season.
So you're saying if the school shut down for education, sports should still continue?
The, in the news, there was a school that, they had to go, the athletes had to go remote in order to participate. So, I think, you know, if we're remote, then it's just the same kids that are in the building.
Julia? So, most of my questions were answered with the information provided. For spectators, I didn't see where there was a mask requirement, so I would like to see that. Unless I'm missing it, but I would like to make sure that, you know, spectators, they'll have face covering. And then, on the facilities, I want to make sure that, and this may not be a you question, Sam, this may bump up to Mrs. Freitag and/or, and/or Wayne, but I would wanna make sure that the gymnasium was completely sanitized, you know, before the, before school started the next day, because we have other students besides the athletes that use that space, so I'd wanna make sure that was prepared for them. And much like we did with the elections, I'd wanna make sure that the rest of the building was closed off to players and spectators during the games. And then I have something for the end, so, but that's, that's it for mine.
Alright, so I do have a couple of questions. You had said that you talked, somebody talked with NHIAA, and there was no school-to-school transmission? Was that just soccer?
They talked to DHHS, and it was the entire fall. They did play volleyball inside with the NHIAA this year, and there was no cases that we have known.
Because there was a news story about a outbreak in New Hampshire, in, in, the only other sport that's been indoor, it's been hockey, and it shut down hockey for two weeks across the state, and as of yesterday, there's been over 150 youth and adult players across 23 teams across the state who have contracted COVID from sports, hockey, indoor hockey. So, I'm not sure if that's why DHHS, you know, neglected to mention that.
I mean, it was the, NHIAA is, I should've said interscholastic athletics, so.
Okay, so this was like out community or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
I think part of the thing from hockey is, there's a lot of hockey around, they're not contained to one area or one state. So, you know, Massachusetts, a lot of the New Hampshire teams go to Massachusetts, I know that from growing up and playing hockey my whole life. So, I think that it was more from other states, would be my guess, but I don't know exactly.
Move on, say what?
Well, I just had another hockey comment about that Vermont actually had also another hockey outbreak that was just Vermont, because they didn't let New Hampshire come in, they're not letting New Hampshire in for a while now. You can't come into Vermont to do anything unless it's essential, and that's over 100 cases in 18 towns, so, yeah.
I was just gonna clarify that, because I read those articles as well, that they're not, they weren't school-related sports teams, that they're travel hockey and club hockey. There is no, no relationship whatsoever times any school district.
Yeah, but I mean, it's still indoor for youth, so it's worth mentioning at least, and I don't know what the, I'd have to look and see, I don't know how far they travel.
Right, no, I understand, but I, but then you said you didn't understand why it wasn't brought up when Sam said he made the call.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's not a school-related sport.
Yeah, and he, he didn't mention any, NHIAA, he didn't mention DHHS, so, yeah.
Alright, Sheila?
And also, so, travel sports have much different regulations, highly good travel softball, there were no masks, there was no specific distancing.
Yeah.
Totally separate, not school-related, they're not necessarily being safe if privately funded or paid.
Yeah.
So it's a very, very different situation.
Well, I know Vermont is doing all that, because they won't even let New Hampshire in, at all, into Vermont, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I think the big thing that we need to remember too, when I brought it up in the poll, is these kids wanna play, and they're gonna play whether we have it here or they go somewhere else and play, where we don't have the restrictions on them, we don't even know where they go. As long as they stay in New England, they're fine. So, I think that, you know, if we don't offer it, they're gonna play, and, and that's, that's something that we need to keep in mind as well, is these kids wanna play sports, and they're gonna do whatever they need to do.
And I can appreciate that, but my concern is that we are sanctioning it, and then, you know, as we, as we talked last, well, last month, that, you know, there were some things, rules that were not followed, and so, community members were worried and upset because the school's sanctioning it, and then it, you know, could possibly get out into the community. So, my next question is about travel, you said we're gonna do the same schools as in the fall, and somebody had sent me actually yesterday, or this morning or yesterday, the screenshot of, we have a schedule, tentative schedule already on NHIA's website for us?
So, the schedule is done a year in advance, I have not gone through Schedule Start and deleted any of the games yet, so that was the schedule that was made last winter in December.
Alright, that's good.
That's not the schedule we're gonna put.
Because like, Holy Family in Manchester was in there, and I'm like, I feel really uncomfortable going to Manchester.
We have not been told by the NHIA that we can delete those games yet.
Okay, good.
But when they do, those will be gone, and the new schedule we put in.
Okay, that's good, because Manchester freaked me out a little bit, thinking we were, because they have such, always have had such high numbers. Um, the family, the two tickets for family requirement, I know there's talks in other schools about, this talk with, where you say family, that they take that, and I don't know if NHIA's taking this position, but to mean household, because it doesn't matter if my cousin down the street is still family, but that could be a whole different family dynamic household, is this household family, or?
It can be, I was just trying to do family members. NHIA really does not give us much direction on, it's a school-district decision, just like the fall. So they have not really sanctioned any of the spectator stuff, this is just stuff that I thought was important. We can do immediate family, if that's what you would like to do, that's fine with me.
I mean, I suspect that that won't be the opinion of everybody, I'm just asking, because I think that makes more sense, because, you know, you can't really, like, just like you can't, you don't, you're not, you know, responsible for what happens in your next-door neighbor's house. If your next-door neighbor happens to be your cousin, who cares, you know? And then the spectators, okay, yeah, you did get the mask part, okay, because I had that too. But also masks, I know NHIA didn't do masks for any players for the fall sports, and I assume they aren't doing masks for. Vermont is, and I know I use Vermont a lot, but I work over there, so I, you know, see a lot of that, but Vermont is doing masks for, they did players mask all for fall sports, and they're doing it for basketball as well. So, but it seems like, just from reading it, that, that New Hampshire's not going that way. Okay, if I, you know, obviously, you're indoor, basketball, you know, you're guarding somebody, you're in their face, your, CDC has now changed the close contact to 15 minutes cumulative, over, I forget how many hours. So if you're, it's like more, I would think closer contact than soccer was, what you're inside. So, I mean, masks is, if Vermont is doing it, I don't know why New Hampshire can't, but, like I said, that's a decision for the board. If anybody else is interested in that, I suspect there won't be. And also, Vermont is doing no spectators at all, which I, I'm sure that wouldn't go either. And, so, yeah, the big one was the travel, so I'm glad you answered my question on that, and the masks for spectators. I mean, yeah, it is similar to the, the fall, and it was a good plan in the fall, I'm just really weary about indoor sports, because what happened with hockey, even though it wasn't students, like, our, you know, school students that were youth and adults, so. Yeah, but thank you for the plan, and thank you for answering the question.
Right, Kayla?
I don't have a question, but I wonder if instead of doing tickets, it would be easier if we have to do contact tracing and get phone numbers? If we just had like a list of all the players, and they have two people each, and you just put phone numbers down, and that's how you see everyone has their two? I know as a parent, I would forget my ticket, so, I think that's gonna add, and if it's like a grandparent coming and people coming from work, I just think tickets might be tricky, so just as a suggestion. That would make sense, I think is a great idea.
Is there any follow-up from anything that anyone has said so far? Alright, so I do wanna clarify a couple of things. So, as Holly pointed out last month, the original presentation was soccer. Had, you know, Sam had said that, you know, he would contact, you know, Anne Freitag, Wayne Woolridge, and the board. So, just so you all know, Sam did contact me several times, now, we had several meetings since that meeting, you know, before everything started. And in those meetings, we talked a lot about communication, and we talked a lot about chain of command, we talked a lot about a lot of things, and in, in my estimation, a lot of the stuff that we've been doing, we keep talking about being fluid and flexible and all that, you know, stuff has morphed a little bit. So, as opposed to us having a board meeting every time they had a game or a practice, I went with the chain of command and instructed Sam to, you know, contact, you know, the principal, who would then consult with the superintendent, and, you know, with the, kind of the, kind of the, the understanding, can't find my words, the understanding that, you know, if something was dicey, or if something was kind of questionable, that then the board would be, would be brought in. So, I know there's been some expectation that, that we were gonna get called to every single game, because honestly, that is absolutely what was set. And if you guys think that I acted improperly with that, you know, you certainly can say so, but I think that in the course of the conversations that we've had, it was, you know, use a chain of command, and, you know, I, so, so that was on a me thing, so I don't want anyone to be jaded against this plan because of an action that I took, but I felt that it was in the spirit of what the board had been talking about for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks. It's using the processes that are already in place, it's staying in our lane, you know, so, and I have had conversations with Mrs. Freitag and Mr. Woolridge confirming that, you know, and they both told me, if there was something that was questionable, it'd come to me, and it would come to all you guys. So, if we're moving forward with sports, and you guys wanna do something different, if you're moving forward with basketball, you guys specifically want something different, you know, say so, because it's up to you, it's not up to me, you know, it's up to all of us, then I can do something different, but I did feel like I was acting in the interest of the board. So I just wanna throw that out there, because that shouldn't land on anyone but me.
So, yeah, I do just wanna say a thank you, and because that was a concern, that we had agreed this to this, and I can see where you're coming from, in the interest of transparency and communication, maybe let the board know, you know, when we deviate from an agreement like that, or maybe when you talk to them, just say, "Hey, just so you know, we're going to Concord, it's a red zone, but everybody thinks that, well, we're gonna be a red zone in, by next week anyway, too." But, probably, but, you know, everyone thinks it's okay, just so we know, so when people do contact us, because I don't, I know I saw a lot on Facebook that people did not believe that people contacted us, but you can attest to it, they did. So when people contact you, we can say, "Hey, the principal okayed this," you know, or the principal superintendent okayed going to a red zone, so.
So, that's the thing too, is, you know, you guys, you know, tell me exactly what you want me to do, because the, the final okay is gonna come, come over there, it's gonna, everything falls to the superintendent, right?
Yeah.
So, the okay comes from over there. If you want the okay to come from someplace different, that's not really a call-around type thing, and it would be meeting.
Or, or email, say, "FYI, we're going to Concord," or they added Concord, or they added.
But we can't do a decision via that.
No, 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 Wayne made the decision, here's where we're going, so you're not surprised by it, or something, you know what I mean?
So what I would say then, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to make less work for me, maybe a little bit, but then when those approvals come through, I think that those emails should come from the administration.
Oh, I don't care who they come from, just so we know that the process was really followed, you know, and it wasn't, not that it wouldn't, you know, I mean, that they didn't fall through the cracks, because things are gonna get dicier, like I said, right now, technically, people from New Hampshire, if you can't go into Vermont for leisure, they don't want you coming over, so things are gonna get dicier as we start moving more into the cold and flu season here.
So, just so I'm understanding correctly, so you would like, when the final approval on games, it's just not practice, it's just games, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, we're traveling, yeah.
So, so for away games?
Well, if we're traveling outside of the, and, and we, I would like, you know, Jim had asked if we could get a schedule, and we never got the schedule, which I understand was fluid, but the initial one, so if we add stuff from the initial schedule, you know what I mean, just things that, just so we can be in the loop, because people do, you know, and they are nervous about it.
Alright, so, Wayne, would it be okay to ask you that when?
Or Anne.
Wayne or Anne, either one, but I can't, I can't ask Anne, I have to ask Wayne, so, and Wayne can delegate. So then, you know, when the games are approved, can we just get an email to the entire board, just so the board is aware of where we're going?
Yeah, yeah, so, once the athletic director has a schedule rebuilt, I would then order to Wayne, he could give it to you for your perusal and approval.
Well, not approval.
Well, not approval, because you guys are approving, just for us to know. So I just wanna, I just wanna make that clear.
Yeah, it's not approving, it's just.
You guys, you guys are approving, we just, just so we know what's happening.
And, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but if it happens like it did in the fall, like, you're constantly kind of trying to add and look around, and so, so the original schedule could get added to at any point, yeah, so, I think that was just what happened with Concord Christian, like, we were okay, and Wilton was right on the edge and stuff, so I know that slipped through the cracks with the hour, because it was like an hour and like five minutes or something. But then all of a sudden, it was an hour and a half to Concord, and we were, people were like, "Oh my gosh, why are we going to Concord?" So, yeah, so just that kind of thing, so that, so that we know for when we get, get calls about it, you know? And, and you're, we made a comment, and it made me think of another question that I didn't have written down. I know Keen, a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was only last week, pulled their team from the playoffs because they were going into a red zone, or maybe it was a school that had a case, I can't remember. So, would, I understand, like I said, the red zone, everybody would play, it's gonna be, they're in a red zone right now, like, we're still barely in a green, going to a yellow, and pretty much everybody else is in a red. So, but if a school has a case, like, say we were to go to Concord Christian for sake of argument, and then you look like that that day or whatever, and they have a case in their school on the website, would we be going to the, you know, was that something we would not think about doing, like, kinda like how Keen did it, or is that whatever?
I can answer that, because we had the issue of cross-country, if it was a case not related to the team, we did not go. So, when we know that day, if there's a case somewhere on site, not necessarily an athlete, but not a person.
Okay.
So we've already been across that bridge.
Okay, good.
Alright, and just for further clarification, because I know Holly took a lot of flack last week. You know, I did have two people contact me about, you know, stuff nothing followed on, on the soccer practices or games or whatever. One, very, very early on, I think it was like your first practice, and I did let Wayne know, I just passed the information along, and I know that, you know, he then probably gave that information to you, and, I mean, I'm not at games or practices, I'm not a sports guy, clearly, but, you know, so, I'm not there to check it, but I, but I come to the SAU often, and I will say that on the next practice, everybody was doing the, everybody was doing everything. So it was like, oh, oh, good, now, I didn't say anything to Wayne on the second one, because I know that person had also contacted you, so I don't know if you had passed that on to Wayne, and then wanted to double team him, so. I just, I just want, because like I said, you, I think you took a lot of flack last week, and I just want you to like, you know, no, it was a real thing, and it's, it's okay, you know, it's okay, because we can, you know, because we can communicate, and then, if we let Wayne know, Wayne can let Sam know, Sam can let the players know, so.
I do have a question, actually.
Sure, yeah.
So, with, with these complaints, and I don't know the answer to this, that's why I'm asking, is, is there any way that I can know about these complaints, so that I can talk to the person that has the complaint? I feel like, you know, if I can talk to them, you know, maybe I can tell them, you know, this is why we did this, or this is that we did that. I don't know if that's a possibility, but I feel like, you know, coming from the athletic director, when it's athletics, is probably pretty important.
So typically, chain of command wouldn't necessarily have me calling you, the same way as, without permission from Wayne, on the same ways I couldn't call, you know, because we're, because we're supposed to follow certain communication channels. Now, if you guys wanna do something different, that's kind of.
I guess, but my, my thing is, is when you, if you get those complaints, can you say, "Call the athletic director," so that he can defend himself, or, or talk to you about it?
And I don't know that it's a, you know, question of, you know, you know, defense per se.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, like, I can explain it, and you can say, "Can you please call the athletic director, or the school principal," and I can talk to Anne, or Wayne, or somebody about it, so that, you know, my, my name's out there, I mean, it's my plan, I mean.
Right, and it's a good plan, so, so Wayne, how do you wanna handle that?
So, best practice, if someone calls me and says, you know, "I got a complaint about something that's going on in middle high school," have you talked to the principal?
Yep.
So the principal's typically the place where that kind of granular conversation and remediation, if necessary, would happen. If I have the name, then I would contact that person and say, "Have you talked to the AD?" Or talk to the principal, the principal then could move it on, if they don't want to, if they just wanna register a complaint, well, obviously, I don't say, "I can't do that." But I let the VAD and principal know that there was a complaint, the person wanted to remain anonymous, and that's just the standard practice. And we, we wanna just get better, we wanna learn, if we have criticism, we wanna make sure we respond, but at the same time, if the critic really wants to know the details relative to the issue they're criticizing, the person who was most involved is going to be. the person who was most involved is going to best be able to explain it. So that's why we try to move it down, but we can't always.
So how, hold on one second, so how do you want us, if if we hear something to the public? Because normally, the normally the chain would be up, and then the chain would be back the other way. So we can do it whatever way you tell us to do it.
If you get it to to me and tell the individual if he wants to call me, that way I can help determine whether this is the complaint that we could get right to Sam and build something up or not.
Okay, all right, so we'll still do, I mean, because that's just how that has to flow. Kayla?
I was gonna say, so if we're personally receiving a complaint, we could make it protocol to ask the person permission to pass their name along to Sam, because he would like to personally speak to people.
We shouldn't go to Sam.
No, we can't.
We shouldn't, but we could pass the name along to Wayne, and he can disperse.
Right, well, that's what, that's what we're just, that's what we're just.
Okay, so just the name, I thought you were saying they had to call Wayne, and then Wayne would have to call Sam.
You would have that option, but they usually don't take it.
No, not necessarily. We can ask them to call Wayne themselves, or we can pass the information along. And sometimes you get someone who doesn't want their name attached to it, and and sometimes that happens, you know, but um if, but we just need to make sure that we're because it gets really messy if we're all of a sudden calling employees and stuff like that, and we can't do that.
Right.
You know, so we need to make sure that we're getting the information to Wayne. If Wayne says do something different, that's, he can give, he can give us permission to whatever, but it should go to him.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that's crystal clear.
Having a parent, like, if I see someone and they say something, are they necessarily gonna call the superintendent to, you know? No, but you follow up, probably not, but if we can pass the name, then Sam can reach out.
Yeah, and you can always say, can I give your information to superintendent, because we can probably, because we can probably address that concern for you.
So maybe we should make that protocol for.
I think it is in the public complaint policy. I think it is laid out that we ask them, and then if they don't want to contact the superintendent or the principal, like whatever, you know, level, then we pass, you know, ask them if you can pass the complaint or the complaint and their name along. I think it is kind of spelled out in in there, but.
Okay, so then we should be doing that when we get a complaint.
Yeah, I mean, but I know I talked to Sean about, because now should we be going? And I know it's because I was a chair for so long, so I just automatically, I could call Wayne, but now, we are, we we should call you, or we should email Wayne and copy you, or.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with the copy. Ann? Yes, please. Would you? That would be awesome. And like I said, you know, it it, my opinion, if I've only had two people contact me all season, and one's a dude.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's okay. I think that's, I think that's good.
Yeah, I had a few others, and I was, I didn't pass names along, because, but mostly it was, you know, they they were down here and saw stuff, or, I mean, Facebook photos, they were very clear that things were not, you know, and it was a snapshot, but it's not, it's a snapshot. So but like I said, I don't get out of work at five o'clock, well, you know, so I'm never, I never see any of this my first hand, because I'm not here in the afternoon, so.
And I don't want you to think that I just brought that up to Julie, to blindside, to criticize. I just didn't want Holly taking an unnecessary amount of flack from last week.
I was, taking a lot.
I just think that needs to be clear.
Yeah.
Um and I want to make sure that my role with any misunderstandings is clear, and that what we do with basketball is clear, so.
I I appreciate it, because it is, you know, it is good to have it all laid out.
Yep. Um anything else from the board? Right, so my initial plan was just to keep citizens' comments at the end and and kind of go through. Um you know, I spoke with Brett briefly before the meeting. I know a lot of students are here to, you know, and maybe people online are here to talk sports. So I'm not going to um make the arbitrary decision myself. I will ask you guys, what do you want to do? Do you want to add a citizens' comments section right in in right now? Or did you want to keep the one that we have at the end? Jim?
I think that was appropriate. Julia?
Yes, well.
Yeah, I do have a question when you circle around.
Okay.
Uh yeah, our meetings get kind of late, and you know, they have school.
Okay.
So I'm I'm fine, I I agree to add as a comment. My question to you is, I remember when we did the hockey discuss, uh coffee, coffee's on my brain, um soccer discussion, you prefaced it by saying, you know, we've received a lot of emails, and people were here, and we're not talking about the merit of sport, any way, shape, or form, it's the safety of it.
Yep.
So is that the same uh standard?
So nobody is disputing the merits of sports, um it's just how are we gonna do it safely? Um you know, the thing with citizens' comments, though, is we're allowing citizens' comments, I can't say, I can't say this is the only thing you can talk about.
Oh, no, definitely, but just just to say.
So if we're given, you know, thirty seconds, we're given a minute, they can talk about their pet dog.
Exactly, no, I just mean, just so that people understand this, what we're, the objective, yeah.
Exactly.
Our cat.
But yeah, but yeah, no, nobody in any way, shape, or form is arguing the merits of sports. We all know how valuable it is, we all know the, you know, the lessons that it teaches, you know? So Ann, do you mind, you know, going through everybody and?
Um, do you want to start in here first?
Yeah, let's start in here.
Um, Mr. Roberts. Megan.
I have something else to say.
Well, okay, okay. Why don't you kids raise your hand if you have something to say? Delaney?
Um, well, I personally am the school representative for our salt team, and I meet with like thirty other kids statewide. And we had a meeting about safety, school safety during sports, and I know that they had great success with indoor ball sports. And I just want to make sure that people know that us as students, athletes, are gonna do whatever we can to continue playing, so we're gonna be as safe as possible. And we're gonna do what we have to do, because it's really important to us. So we want to make it known that we're gonna be as safe as anyone else, so that we can continue playing.
Cool, thank you.
So I'm great.
Yeah, like what Delaney said, um we're all just here, we just want to play. Um and we're gonna do whatever we have to to keep that as as safe as possible, plus to have a season and be able to score and play. Like, that's all we're really worried about. We're just getting kind of along, like, well.
Amy, do you have anything?
No.
All right.
Um, my only thing was that, um, yes, it was like worrying knowing that if we're gonna have a basketball season or not, but like, if we do have a basketball season, I want to like inform that, like, as being a captain and senior, like, I was very eager to have a season, because it's gonna be my last one for months of the future. But like, being a captain, like, yes, we're gonna like follow all safety and guidelines as well, because like, it's very important for us to have sports going on as well. Being a salt member as well, like, we are gonna do everything we can to follow all guidelines at all times, because we want to keep this going on and not get stopped. That's all about it.
Brother Teresa, do you have?
Go ahead.
Uh I just wanted to thank Sam for his hard work on this. Um I think we put together an excellent plan, very similar to soccer. Uh I wanted to thank the board for allowing us, the athletes to play um the fall season this year. I think that they did it very successfully. Um and I was very proud of them for the efforts they put in to make sure that they were safe. I think they would call each other out a lot of times, and really worked together to make sure it was a safe environment. Um so that's basically all. I just wanted to thank both Sam and Erica, sorry, Erica, you worked very hard on this well, and kept this.
Erica's like, hey, wait.
No, she would never, she wouldn't. Um but I just, I, I wrote letters before, so everyone knows how I feel, but I just wanted to give some gratitude, um where I think gratitude would just do. Um so that's it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't think there's that many people on here that want to speak about sports. So I just add, put in the chat, does anyone want to speak? If you want to speak about sports, please unmute yourself.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so.
Okay.
Oh, Brett, did you want to?
I guess the only thing I'd add to it is, um you know, this affects more than, you know, just the kids in this school. It does also potentially add impact the kids, you know, across the street, too. Hopefully, we're able to come to a, you know, a happy medium here between safety and allowing these kids to play, and we can use this great plan that that Sam and, you know, the brains behind the operation put together.
Call their names again.
And we can, we can bring some of this over to, you know, potentially the rec and allow younger kids the opportunity as well.
Thank you. Did you want?
No.
Okay. All right.
You're falling off the chair.
Okay, so let's make sure, let's make sure that we're clear. We have Sam's plan. Um we added masks for spectators, right? Um we clarified the communication, um you know, Sam's gonna continue to use the chain of command, and we're gonna, we will get an update from Mrs. Fritag. Do 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 do. So facilities, you know, and that's, it's anybody foresee any problem with the, I mean, I know Sean's not here, but Ann, do we see any prob- problem with facilities being done?
And again, as Teresa said, gratitude, Mr. Lee came in early this morning, and he sanitized everything. He is tremendous asset.
Yes. Agreed. And there's no problem with closing off the rest of the building. Um and where do we land on the two spectators? Are we gonna keep it as family, or are we gonna keep it, are we gonna do household? What do you guys want to do?
For me personally?
Yes.
I think family should extend past households. I mean, I have a granddaughter who's a senior in high school this year, and this will be her last basketball season. I would like to be able to watch a game.
Okay.
Um I feel like these families are, if you've got a grandparent that's going to a game to watch a grandchild, they're, they're most likely sharing communal space on a regular basis anyway.
Okay. Jim, do you have a preference?
Um I think we'll lose your definition of family is better than more.
Okay. Kayla?
Yeah, I think if you're considering someone family, then you are most likely with them without a mask on and not six feet apart.
Okay.
And because of the guidelines, everyone's gonna be spaced six feet apart, masks on. So no other family is gonna be exposed to another family. So I feel like whatever people define as family is.
As those two tickets.
Yep.
Polly?
Yeah, sure. That's fine.
Okay.
I I bring it up just because, you know, I was just bringing up concerns that other.
No, I actually, I I had, I had thought the same thing when I originally got, got the information, so you need to bring up whatever concern that you have.
Yeah, I mean, I then I do see whoever it was, I can't remember which one of you said about your sharing communal spaces, if you're, you know, likely, was that you? But yeah, um and you know, so I I do, I do agree with that, because I I know that's out there, and that's how people are approaching this. I mean, there is a part of that we're sanctioning that thought, but you can't, you know, that that's, you know, some schools have taken that step, but most haven't, so. So yeah, I'm I'm fine with that, because I understand that's actually how how it's working in the real world.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh Sam, do any of those modifications at all pose any difficulty for you?
No, um there is one other thing that I wanted to add in here, but I didn't. Unfortunately, the the two tickets per family, there's gonna be a lot of people who miss a lot of basketball games this winter. Uh I did talk to Mr. Woolridge a little bit. Uh we're gonna try and figure out a way to get these games streamed, so that people can.
I was actually, I was actually gonna ask that, if you could do that, yeah.
There there's some deals going on right now with the NHIA and NFHS, um that I'm gonna do a little bit more digging into. Um but I just wanted to put that out there, that we we are planning on hopefully streaming these games, so that everybody in the community can still watch and root for these these young athletes.
Yeah, I was actually gonna ask if that was a possibility, because I know, you know, the limitations.
That is something that we are looking into still.
All right, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the plan as amended.
All right, we have a motion, looking for a second now.
Second.
Right, motion in a second to accept the plan as amended for the discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, so motion carries. Um, all right, so what's that next question? Request from nurses. Oh, and you, anybody here, you're welcome to stay for the whole meeting, but you know, if this is like only teaching, you're welcome to not stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for participating.
Does this go within this thing, you know? Is this kind of a nice thing?
I have no idea.
Okay.
We'll find out. Um all right, requests from nurses. Who is going to speak to that?
So this is a letter that uh from our two nurses that I was asking forward to the board, which I did. I did have our middle high school nurse met with our administrators this morning, so we could ask a few questions about the this letter. Um and I think Elise is available online if there were any questions of the board. Uh currently, you have a case occurs in the district. We closed down uh for ten days, so this obviously would be different. But I think it's self-explanatory relative to quarantine issue, and it's totally your prerogatives. I mean, you're, you know, you represent the community here, and there are a lot of conflicting issues relative in as far as this, but I was asked to forward it to you, and felt that was the appropriate way to go. Scope of the issue.
Julie, did you want to?
But this is, it just kind of ties back to the, to the point that was made when we were reviewing the minutes. This, this is basically the same issue that was discussed at the last board meeting, and we decided not to.
Yep. Um Kayla?
I think because last month, we did discuss this, and we decided not to do it, and instead we determined if we have one case within our community, our school community, then we shut down. I think personally, it would be inappropriate to decide at the following meeting, when now it's even closer to that time, that we are going to do it anyway. So that's just my personal opinion.
Jim?
Um, I think, where is a good one?
Polly?
Yeah, and like, I agree with Kayla, and I just wanted to, I just wish to thank the nurses, you know, for for giving us their opinion, and I I do, you know, appreciate them wanting to be proactive, which is, you know, it to the best that we can, but yeah, the 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 limitations of the timing and 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 taking parents and all that into consideration, and the upheaval this would cause at this late date on them, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna concur, because at the last meeting, you know, I think that I was uh fairly vocal about if we're gonna do a course correction, do as few as possible, like do one, you know? And we, obviously, if we have a case in the school, we have a, we have a a plan for that. But, you know, like I said, I think that I was, I was pretty uh clear, as far as my opinion, that, you know, we not do continued course corrections and um, you know, burden families. You know, with that said, you know, we ended up doing the half-day Fridays, um and even three weeks ago, I don't think that leaving for the holidays, going remote for the holidays, um was was gonna work for family's schedule, you know, had we done it with um, you know, the plans that we got from the onset, you know, that's one thing. But if it, if, I just feel like if it wasn't enough time three weeks ago, three weeks later is is just too late.
Yeah.
So. Um we don't need any kind of, we're not taking action, so we don't need any kind of motion, right?
There's no uh expectation of action. There's the letter correspondence, which uh you've accepted, you've read it, and it's up to you if you want to make a motion as a result of it.
Did anybody want to take any action, or we? Have we had the discussion? Kayla?
Um, obviously, not doing this, but maybe communicating with families that the expectation is, if they travel, that they quarantine when they come back, so families, we can expect families to do something we haven't informed them of. So I think letting them know that that is the expectation now, so they can adjust plans if they need to.
I think reinforcing the policy is is totally fine. I think informing the public that that is, you know, what we expect is fine. I just want to be careful that we're not telling families that they can't.
Oh, no, just if you travel.
Because we don't, because we don't have that, right?
No, they have to quarantine if they make the choice, yeah.
Just so you don't do it, and then come back, and your child is in school talking about how they went to wherever.
Pretty much anywhere.
Right, and now, oh my God, we have to quarantine, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I I personally don't see any problem putting that message out.
Do you want me to make? Go out with an all-call that would just reiterate what we said a couple of times ago. I'll go out with an all call that would just reiterate what we said a couple of times ago about the New England states. Because it's still, New Hampshire is still playing one.
And is that, is that part of, one of the ones Julia already wrote up?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll just emphasize what you've already done.
Yeah, a reminder as we go towards, you know, holidays are approaching.
Yeah. So if we, so if we do the all call, if we do the email and send the same email to staff, we should be good.
And if we put it on Facebook?
Yes, and then after, and then after all that, then we can, I was gonna actually put that one on you.
Yep.
But we should just clearly make sure it's noted as a reminder.
Yep.
I will, yeah. I'll send it to Sean before I send it out.
Okay, cool. That sounds good.
And it'll go out. I am going to do the test of the employee system probably tomorrow, so I don't want, so it'll probably go out Friday.
Okay. I'm, I'm around tomorrow and I'm around Friday morning, but I'm not available for the rest of Friday day.
Yeah, no, you and I already have a date.
Yes, all right. Joe?
One of the other things that we discussed is relatives coming from other states, say South Carolina or Florida.
I, we'd have to pull that up, the communication. I think it might have been addressed in there, but I'm not 100%.
I'll look at it.
I don't think we did.
I don't think, for some reason, I don't think it was, but.
That's a good idea.
We can do a little reminder about that. I can pull up some of the DAHS.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is there guidance for that because, okay.
And we also have received some guidance from PyMx about it. Who is Archer Carrier.
All right.
Yeah, if they're using an airplane to get here too, I would kind of think it wouldn't matter where you're from.
Or if they're staying in your house and they came from, yeah, like you're gonna be around them, yeah.
Oh, we can add, we can add that in. Anything else from anybody on that? All right, kindergarten proposal.
Mr. Bogio has a proposal. When we decided to do the early release for students on Friday, so we're, we're obviously keeping staff here as, as they are doing the preparation for the following week and trying to finish up. But that led, a couple of his kindergarten teachers spoke to him about it, an option that he's in favor of. And it seems to make sense, but would need board approval because it's a bit of a variation of what we agreed to a few weeks ago. So it's okay if Mr. Bogio has the floor and explains what his plan is.
Thanks. So when the decision was made, like Wayne said, the kindergarten teachers felt like, as stated in my introduction, missing one fifth of their learning time at this stage of the game for them is not in their best interest. And they really were thinking about the kids and what could be done to provide an education for them. So when we met, the first step was, I said, that maybe we need to figure out whether it would be a feasible thing for these parents to be able to shift their schedules to be able to allow their children to come on Friday mornings. And for the most part, the answer came back yes. 11 out of the 15 families were able to do so. And the other ones said that they would be, you know, that it would be all right if it didn't work out for them that, you know, in terms of what their kid not being in school on Friday morning would be all right with them. So I was kind of surprised that they were that flexible, but it worked out nicely in that stuff. So then the next step was that we were gonna divide them into three groups. One of them, a small group for Ms. Martel, and then Mrs. Carrier and Mrs. Snide would take on their afternoon children that they already have. Because Ms. Martel was taking care of the remote kindergarteners in the afternoon. So we'd have 14 in each of those groups of Ms. Carrier and Ms. Mark, Mrs. Snide. And that led to like, okay, well, how are we gonna manage the space? And we were able to work with the art music teacher to rearrange the Friday morning schedule so that they have enough physical distancing to do kindergarten in the art and the music room and not have to worry about being too close to each other. So that, that part was taken care of. The bus company does not foresee an issue with it. And then I was gonna propose a start date of November 13th to, to be able to do this and try and make it work throughout the, throughout the rest of the year. It's a small barrier and that's three or four of the students kind of needed like a gap, fill in the gap between dismissal at 11:15. Their older siblings might be picking them up at 1 o'clock or they might be going to a daycare facility with their older brother in third grade. So pending any kind of decision or approval, we would try and figure out a kind of a bridge schedule for that. And one of the things I noticed when I was reading through this just now was that we missed lunch. So we're, we'll have to shorten some of the instructional time that they would have, like their enrichment time, and include lunch, obviously. Kind of a quick summary.
Kayla, do you have a question?
So the teachers feel comfortable providing instruction in art and music? And with the larger group, they feel like this is possible and they can be successful?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about using some of the support staff to help move materials, instructional materials. And their, each kid has a toolkit, you know, their own personal toolkit. So we, you know, the pair of duties on Friday morning would be a little bit different, but they'd be helping to set up the room for Friday morning instruction in the art room. And we have the smart board, so a lot of the, you know, direct instruction would be delivered from the, from the smart board. The number corner can also be done online, so we'll be looking at delivering number corner online, you know, once we, once we know what the decision is.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't adding more when the whole purpose of Fridays was to ruin. So that was my only concern.
I think Mrs. Snide is there too, so.
Yeah, she's on.
She's gonna kill us if we make her talk.
Yeah, she probably would, you're right. Yeah, and I have to deal with her regularly, so.
If she wants to, absolutely, but I don't want to put anyone on the spot.
Makes you be ignoring it.
Wayne?
So if we were to do this, we would, it would be not this coming Friday. We could begin the following Friday and we need to get a communicate out, obviously, and make sure everybody was aware. I don't know if parents have, if you've already talked about possible startup dates, Joe, with the parents?
Yeah, I, I did talk to them. I suggested possibly the 13th as the startup date. You know, the same 11 families were all set on that. And then I'll revisit with them once we know the decision.
Anybody have anything?
Just thank you. It looks like, you know, a lot of moving pieces came together and so thank you, Joe and whoever else.
Mostly the kindergarten teachers and their desire to really, you know, make sure these kids are, you know, developmentally, it's just so important for them.
Yeah, it's wonderful. Thank you. I was impressed when I read through this earlier today that you guys went to above and beyond to try to, even just for this small handful of students to really do the very best we can.
All right, well then I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept kindergarten plan for Friday.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, COVID-19 heat update.
Yeah, just a brief update. I know I gave you something last week relative to what we had seen and where we are. I would have to, once again, thank staff. I mean, they go five days a week. You know, it's not the typical, not the rule, especially in a, in a middle high school environment. That's, you know, unusual in Cheshire County, around the country. It's not, about 40% of schools that are doing that. But I have continued to hear and notice students who are very happy relative to what I might expect to be coming to school. In the most recent anecdote, our crossing guard couldn't, commented this week that she couldn't believe the difference in the students as far as skipping and running and, and excited about coming to school as compared to a year ago. So I think the fact that, you know, they had this time when they maybe wanted to be at school and couldn't, that now that they are in school, they're more appreciative, at least, you know, I keep hearing that from, and listening to others, the same thing. But if you look at the, the protocol, which I'm not advocating to change, but I think it's a good protocol where every student, we get a temperature check. It might become more difficult as he gets cold. By the way, that's already becoming, it's almost complicated, but do a temperature check. But if they've got, I'm tired today, that's a COVID symptom. I got a headache, COVID symptom. I got a rhino, it's a COVID symptom. I got a fever, obviously COVID symptom. I mean, you start going out, there's a lot of symptoms. So we've sent home 114 kids slash staff since beginning of the year and they've either come back with a negative. We have no positive tests. You know that right away, so probably don't have to say that. No positive tests. But we have, they either out 10 days or they come back with a negative test, which is sometimes a hardship because as was, you know, as you've heard, it's sometimes hard to get the test. Just not as easy as it should be. That's, that's a problem for us. But nevertheless, and most of those, I think there was 74 at the elementary and 41 at the middle high. So there's more, as you'd expect. I mean, little kids. So currently, my assessment is that we are managing the COVID. However, you probably know that the cases as far as positivity, the positive test rate is double what it was when we had our last board. We're now over 2%. You look around, you know what's happened in Vermont. You know, we're, we're, things seem to be moving our way. So I think it would be Pollyanna for us to think that we're somehow gonna be immune from a spread over the winter. But for now, things are going very well. Teachers are energized, students are learning, making up ground that we lost last spring. In fact, you probably, you know, where some of those places, reading, for example, is, you know, we got a lot of ground to make up. And I'm sure math is the same way. So we're trying to get that done. We got Compensatory Ed going in addition to our Regular Ed. All in all, and I look around at my colleagues at Southwest New Hampshire, I think we're doing as well or better than the New District. We're very fortunate.
Does, anything, anybody have anything for Wayne? Holly?
I have one question about the COVID questionnaire. I know we, like, stopped that. Okay, Anne?
We are not asking students anymore. We, Deb, Tribuco, Elise, Cody, and I have been working feverishly for a month on this program called SNAP.
S-N-A-P, SNAP?
S-N-A-P. We've had some issues because supposedly Power School was supposed to be talking to it. And, you know, we kept getting it's Power School's fault, it's SNAP's fault, it's Power. We finally have all this, it's a really long, complicated story, so I'm not going to go into it with you. We have a meet, I have a meeting with the administrative assistants on Friday and Deb and I are gonna work on a plan on how to get this out. The biggest problem we have is parents who will not give us an email address. So that may or may not be an issue because that's the, really the only way the system works. So we're gonna probably go out with an all call by next Tuesday, hopefully. That will say, please explain how to get on the program. Deb's gonna put a, put a video on the website, on the website, yeah, sorry. On the HSD website that explains how to download the app, how to answer the questions. And that will be required once a week. I mean, both of the, the school nurses ask those questions all the time to the staff. So it's, and we can put staff on this if they have an email address. And most of the staff, Deb and I are the only staff members that have an email address in Power School right now because they have to do it manually. So it's, you know, so the nurses will probably still ask the questions on weekly basis.
Yeah, the staff, they get an email, right? Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what's going to, that's what it is. And Elise, actually, this program, I think, has been bought, has been bought in August and it's just taking until now to get everything to work properly.
Thank you, guys. All three of you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. From the other two, too.
Anything else?
And our, I must say, our administrative assistants who are updating emails and because it has to do with who has, there's just been, so we, our administrative assistants have been working diligently. Also, I'm sure we will to get all this taken care of.
Pass along our thanks to them, please. Thank you.
Anybody have anything else for COVID update or questions? No? All right, let's move on to digital signage discussion.
If I could just distribute this quick, I just got this this evening. This is an action we need today, but we just want to let you know that the facilities committee has moved an item up on their CIP. The signage, the last year's senior class donated $8,000 to, for us to get an electronic sign where somebody could, the office, and push a button that says snow day or remote day or, you know, election, that kind of thing. I mean, it would just be so much different. But you see that we don't have, it's 14,000 plus. And so we don't have the difference between eight and 14. But if the board wanted to consider, wanted to direct us to try to find some money in the budget. And I don't want to, I know, I wouldn't ask Mr. O'Connor to do that immediately because he is very different at the time. But I would ask him to, you know, at our next facilities meeting, which is the 20th of November, we could speak to possible funds where we might be able to, to find the additional money to make this sign happen. But this is, since we have a talk with a full board, just the facilities committee, that we would want to have that conversation.
I think one of the things we talked about at the facilities meeting, and I don't even know who you'd approach about it, what a guest would be the select board, but it was right after we had talked about voting, was gonna be in the high school. And what a great community use that this electronic sign could have and that the town could use, that they could post things of importance that maybe the Parks and Recs could use. Maybe, maybe we could, we should investigate creating some sort of a partnership with the town. Say, okay, hey, listen, we've got this great sign, we've got $8,000 that was donated by the class of 2020. We feel like it's a great community resource. We'll manage it, we'll upkeep it, we'll put, we'll, you know, pay the $8,000 that we have in our pocket right now. Are there any other resources? Does anyone else feel like this is a resource that could be shared both as a resource and as an expense?
Kayla?
That is a great idea and I wonder if maybe Catherine, you know, she's pretty good at finding funds, I think, so.
You know, a community center, if we could, if we made it a true shared resource, but I think it has the potential to be. Because we all have been by this, you know, we don't want to say the same thing for weeks at a time anyway. So if we, if, if the community center, you know, she wanted to post something or the town or whatever, it really was a resource, but I think it could be used by everybody, then let's find a way to share it as well as the expense part.
Yeah, that would be great.
Anne?
One thing we have to remember is we're gonna have to go to the planning board.
Right.
I know. They have a very difficult chair.
They do.
And members. Just because of the, you know, it has to be lower at night or something like.
It has to, yeah, you, you have to, you have to, there are guidelines for the illumination. Now, it's, I'm assuming red lettering, but we don't have stops, we don't have like a stoplight right there. So, because they have to be X amount of feet from a traffic light. Yeah, there is, there is different guidelines for that. And it can't be blinking.
Right, it has to be like a scroll.
If it's, if it's, if it's scrolling or if it's a changing sign, there are specific time intervals that you have to adhere to, so it's not going fast.
Yeah.
Oh, that makes sense.
Like driving off the road, not read it, right?
Exactly.
But I just, I feel like that's something we could investigate and we could get, you know, I really. I mean, we could get, you know, I really, um, I really also don't, just think it's a great resource. I think, I think it really shows appreciation to the class of 2020 that, that gave us $8,000 to, to make their, their kind of dream of making this happen come to fruition in any way we can.
Holly, did you have something?
Yep, I know when we first started to talk about this a couple of years ago, um, and I don't know if they're still in a position, but the PTA had expressed some interest in helping out if they could, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think they were also trying to get money for the bleachers, though, so they might be a little tapped out.
That's PTA, yeah, yeah. This is the elementary, so yeah, you're right about the PTA, but yeah.
Yeah, and they do, or they did, this was a few years ago. They did have like 1,500 or 2,000, I think, to do a special.
Yeah, it was, it was around the time of the groundbreaking because I remember talking to somebody at that, yeah.
Yeah, that might be, that could be another good, if we could get, you know, a little money from them, some money from the town, it could really be a collaborative effort.
So, um, so just from a budgetary standpoint and municipal budget law, so you have to, to have an expenditure, you have to have an appropriation. So we have a bottom line budget and there may be, and so does the Select, sort of the Select Board. So they would, if they were to pull money aside for something that wasn't in the budget like this, if it fit in, because there's mechanisms for unexpected expenses the same ways as mechanisms for grants that you don't necessarily know you're going to get, they would need to make sure that, and the same thing, we would need to make sure that the expense came out of a line that made, made sense. If we couldn't take it from books for a sign.
Right, right.
But like if we had like, if we had like advertising or if we had something like, you know, something like that, something that made sense, then you can do it. Yeah, the same as the Select Board. If they wanted to do it or if we wanted to do it but couldn't find that line, then you have to have a public hearing. Just so, just so everyone knows that that's how that works. That being said, does somebody want to draft a letter to the Select Board asking them about it? Because I feel like it should come from facilities, but it doesn't have to.
Well, we've got a facilities meeting coming up here. We have to agenda it. Facilities committee, pick your up.
I mean, if, I mean, if you guys want, if you guys want to move forward with it, and, you know, I, I'm certainly in favor of that.
I, I know the principals are very excited. And it seems that every time this comes up, people are very excited. Originally, we had a quote for 20,000 and we didn't have 8,000 from students, so we just had this.
So now we have a lot, we have a more reasonable quote and we have half the money, sorry. More than half. Anne?
Maybe Catherine could be invited to the facilities first couple of minutes of it. And that way she can know what's going on and see if there's any great money out there or what planning board would, you know, zoning and all that stuff.
I mean, planning, you know, planning board's easy enough because we'll just do the, um, we'll just do the application. And if it turns out to just be a sign application, that can go through the building inspector. If it turns into any kind of site plan review or anything like that, which I don't know that it would, but if, if it, if that was the case, then we'd have to go to planning board and, and do that. But if it falls, if it just falls under a sign permit, which it may very well, then you can just go to the building inspector, get the sign permit, and you won't need to even deal with planning board. So, Kayla?
Do you want me to just write up kind of what is the whole story for selectmen to present to them? Or do you want to just talk to them? Or do you want to have facilities do it?
Well, that's, that's up to everybody.
That's what I just said.
Well, I was thinking, because we kind of know like the whole story with the senior class and then wanting to collaborate with selectmen. So if you want me to write it up for facilities to approve.
Do you want to write something up and get it to Jim and then Jim can bring it to facilities?
Okay, so I was going to offer to bring something to our meeting to write up as well.
You're, are you, you're on facilities, right?
I'm on facilities.
So if you want to just write it up, that works too, because you're there anyway.
Right, because I'm only, I was just going to say, Jim, do you want me to bring a romp or something?
Yeah, we'll, we'll spring it, we'll edit it as a agenda. And then we can get a whole crap. Yeah, I'll get, I just made a note to call.
And, um, so every, so do we, we need a motion to proceed? We can just do a verbal?
Yeah, we can do, your motion will be once we get the.
Once we get the, to expect.
Right, move the expense number of dollars on it. They're up to.
All right, so everybody's okay with facilities moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I know your name. And I'm assuming Jim and Julia, you guys are looking forward.
Yep.
All right. Okay, that's awesome. That's actually kind of exciting. I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so the diversity policy, first reading.
I have such a message.
I did that at home the other night and no idea where.
Because that this is different than, um, than that normal policy. Because this is a policy, um, if you remember, we have to have the D and, um, it's nation that Julie is in charge of. So this is just our, the school, the school, it's our school's policy on diversity. And this is the harassment, um, complaint form, discrimination complaint form that Julie has come up with. And I just assigned it to ACE slash D diversity statement. Because we have an ACE and AC.
The beginning, um, other, your board business, they have, the nurses and some of the staff.
I don't know, they have the nurses.
Everybody's having trouble with the.
I know, like, wait a minute, no, I'm, I'm looking at JLC.
There we go, it's on the back of something.
It's on the back of this.
The nurse's letter.
Yes.
The letter, yeah.
So. So, uh, does this, does this come from a sample, a sample policy or a sample statement somewhere? Or did we do this on our own?
No. Um, we plagiarized it like we.
Okay.
Like we often do.
Like we usually do.
Holly, it's, it's.
I think it's why it was me and my little.
That's what I'm thinking, the exact same.
And usually they're already vetted if they're up there.
Yeah.
I was going to maybe just say, we use, we follow some guidelines. Like, let's not say plagiarize.
Well, yeah, I didn't say it.
So Sean?
Yes.
Um, can I?
Please.
Okay. So I love, love, love this. My question is, how are we going to do this? So it's one thing to have a policy, it's another to actually start doing. So I would love to hear some kind of action thing happening.
So, so I think, so there's the formula, and I was going to, I was going to ask, I was going to ask Wayne, because I think, I think in your last month's report, you briefly mentioned, because there's now a, and I wanted to get more information on that. There's now a, is it Diversity Committee?
Yes.
With a Director of Diversity?
Yes.
All right, so can you tell us about that?
Student Services is our, and this is a result of a new regulation that passed about a year and a half ago from the interstate legislature. So we're really kind of a two-pronged approach. One is, as a system, we have to show that we have a complaint avenue that is not directly related to the principal. Let's say the principal doesn't see it or doesn't have to prove some. So there's got to be a board that kind of oversees, there has to be oversight. So if students have, listen, I've been, I feel like I've been discriminated against or reports an issue like that, it goes to this group. So they not only then determine whether this is an issue where, of some truth, some merit, in which case there's an investigation, and if we need to do something in the school relative to our curriculum to make sure that there's not a hole or a gap and our students are not, um, being in an environment that helps them become sensitive to these kinds of issues. So it's kind of a two-pronged deal and obviously it's expected. Uh, and it's a way to help protect the district as well as do what would be the right thing to do. So a complaint would come to our Director of Student Services. You would, the team together, just like you would a critique relative to a book. A parent complained to our book, get the team together. And then they would determine the legitimacy of the complaint. If there was issues relative to discipline, that would then, you go back to the principal. But this way, the, the district has some separation between building level administration and issues that might be systemic that we may not aware of.
So the scope of this group is really to review, you know, we, you know, review and investigate too? Or just review?
Well, that depends, but they have the authority to investigate if they need to. Okay, they don't have the authority to punitive, that's not the role of that committee.
So it's basically like a review board type of thing?
So, yeah, my question, I guess, was more about curriculum-wise, what are we doing to kind of diversify and make sure?
So one of the things we spent a lot of time last spring on is diversifying our library collection. And we also, so Mrs. Hammett and Mrs. Bashford, the ESL teacher and Ms. Bean, all worked on coming up with, trying to broaden our, our selections in the library. And we also looked at that this year again when we did our reorders for library books this year. And then trying to also integrate some of that, like with Dottie Morris, you know, that kind of scope of things and the bigger picture of understanding and respecting differences among people. I mean, there's so much that you can do culturally, you know, and understanding different cultures at our level that, you know, you can really dig deep into, um, differences in the cultures and, and help the kids understand those differences.
Fantastic.
And, and I do believe our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment is on the Diversity Committee. And so that's, gives us some district-wide scope, not just building scope.
So we're talking diversity and touching on cultural competence too. Okay. And Anne has a connection with that woman, Dottie Morris. She's a King State professor and she's doing a webinar series. I don't know the details about it. I haven't been able to, I don't know if it's started yet or not, but I remember it didn't really fit into my schedule.
It actually starts tomorrow during parent-teacher conferences. But I will say that we have some very dedicated staff members and most of them are in Joe's building, quite frankly. Katie Hires and Jessica Bashford, our ESL teacher, started a book study last summer on, on, you know, the, the diversity that we don't have here in the school and how does it affect how kids treat each other. And we did a really good job with that book study and I think people are excited about it. So I think one of the things that Joe mentioned is what are, what are the materials that we have kids read? Who are the heroes in those books? Are they all white male heroes or who are they? So, I mean, we, we really looked at some of those issues. And I think the two programs that we use for social emotional learning, the Second Step and School Connect have a lot of diversity issues in them. So through the advisory program, we've tried to incorporate those still. So.
Holly?
Um, just because you had mentioned Kat is on the committee. Who else is on the committee? Like, what other positions?
So in addition to Julie and Kat, and I have, but there's a committee, there's about six people on this committee, right? Kat, have you met formally since?
We have not.
All right, so they're new, Kat's new and the committee just assembled us spring. But.
We, we have, I take that back, we have. And they would like to do a book study on teaching with poverty in mind. However, I think right now teachers are just so overwhelmed that they haven't been able to get enough of a response to start that book study. So we're hoping that maybe in the spring or once things shift, you know, between the spring and the fall, then that could become more active.
So we'll give you an update because it is part of kind of the goal of conversation. And we'll, we can give you periodically an update as to where. We were hoping to be much ahead of, you know, where we are. But this little thing around March just derailed.
Yeah.
Lots of our plans. And that's one, this is one, so we're not where we wanted it.
Right, thanks. I think this will also help with the behavior and the culture shift work we're also doing. I think these kind of marry together perfectly, so it's good timing for all of us.
So a question on the form. Did you send this, did we send this form to legal for review?
We have more, want to get to you first. If this worked for you, we'll send it to legal. I'm not sure, uh, I wouldn't, I don't think that this was absolutely copied from another district. But it may just be the best thinking and some, you know, analysis and, okay, what would fit us? And there's probably been some legal already review, but I don't know that. If there has, then I wouldn't bother to do it again.
Okay.
I personally think it's very, it's well-rounded. It includes like everything. It's super user-friendly, which is not typical of some stuff.
I've, I've had to deal with these forms in other jobs. And I just want to make sure because, because it asks, you know, some pretty personal questions.
Yeah.
And some pretty sensitive questions. So I do want to make absolutely 100% sure, and I just need to be clear on that, that this is vetted through legal before we use it.
Yeah, so should we through, or, you know, vote on it pending?
Well, you can do it as a first reading.
Yeah, this is.
It's a first, it's a first reading, so.
Okay.
So, any other questions, Tom?
Yeah, how long would we maintain this form?
It would be typically, uh, the board could review any of the administrative procedures that go along with your policy, you know, and I think probably yearly you want to have it come around, but that hasn't been determined.
What, did you mean record retention?
Well, that, but yeah, man, I meant more like if there was, if there was a complaint actually.
I think there's probably, um, state guidelines that would have to be followed according to this. We have a record teaching guideline and a short harassment form, like form is part of that.
So maybe we could just get that information.
We can certainly get a, we've had, you know, increase of complaints or last year we had three complaints, like you do with bullying. But you wouldn't be able to get the actual.
No, no.
Okay. Um, and who, like, where would this be, like, stored? Like, how would this be?
In the Director of Special Student Services, so somewhere in her files. Just one of the other, as we do with, in a, you know, relatively small district, a lot of hats. But it is the, this function, it does fall typically under the Director of Student Services umbrella. Big umbrella.
So if there is a complaint, it goes to the Diversity Committee? And what happens if they can't? So do they decide on what happens next? Or like, what is the process going to be, sort of the chain of command, I guess?
Well, they, they have their own, you know, they have some insulation so that they can do their work without feeling worried.
Right.
And if they find, have a finding, then there has to be some kind of remediation and/or some punitive measure and both likely. If someone's being discriminated against, you know, then whoever's in discrimination, whether it's sexual harassment, harassment of any kind, uh, whether it's based on ethnicity, whatever the issue is, then there'd be some, typically the counselors or social workers would get involved in that sort of thing and there would be some kind of educational aspect to it. Because really what we're trying to do is not find people who don't think as they should. We want to get people to have a better idea, more compassionate understanding of the issues of that people face.
Right. And then would it go, so if there, you know, it was found that harassment was involved, that's covered under our behavior policy, right? That's like a tier.
So there would be a recommendation as far as the education side, but there's an already behavioral tiered approach to consequences. And it would, then it depends on frequency of issues or severity that, you know, so there'd be a lot that would go into that. And that would be an administrative call.
Okay.
They can always appeal administrative call to the superintendent.
Right, okay.
Julia?
I kind of, I liked where Jim's comments at least took my train of thought. So I just wanted to follow up on how it's sorted, who gets this information? In that, like, this isn't a form, like, you know, this is a form that's, students will probably, maybe some fear, interpretation, some hesitation to make such a complaint. And, and a part of that, I would think for a teenager or a young child, would be who's going to know? So this is definitely not going to be stored, like, say, in the student's file that multiple people would have access to. I mean, there needs to be some reassurance that that would happen. Because I think if, if it's, if, if that were a possibility. Because I think if, if it's, if, if that were a possibility, then we, there might be a tragedy in that somebody wouldn't report if they weren't assured of the confidentiality and that this wasn't going to be kept somewhere that people have access to, which student general file would be able to see. I just need to be clear.
And the Director of Student Services has probably as many confidential files. Very strict protocols of federal law that mandate, and we have to keep those files forever, basically. So, yeah, there's.
But how do I, as a student, know that? How do I say, okay, I'm going to fill out this form door-handed in my whole room, teacher? Do I, I mean, it needs to be.
I don't know how that, if that's already been.
It says right on here, the files of complaint with the school director, please contact and email this form to the Director of Diversity or bring it to the Office of Student Services.
Should we maybe put in, like, once you're actually doing this, put in who those people are? Because if I have a student, I don't know who the Director of Diversity is. Or who, what's Human Resources, so.
Yeah, that's like, that's, I mean, it needs to be black and white and very clear. For when a student finally gets the nerve or the, or the temptation to say, listen, this is what happened to me, but how, I don't, this doesn't tell them where to go.
Okay, we'll work, Julie and I will work together on this.
Thank you.
I think a common avenue for this is the counselor or social worker would then help the student with the complaint. But certainly a student can just say, hey.
Or a parent for that.
Right.
But you had said about, you know, sometimes it would, most often start with the counselor or whatever. Will the staff be made aware of this in case, like, say, a student just goes to whatever teacher they feel comfortable? Then, then the teacher would, like, you know, the staff would be made aware that this is a, a step they could take.
So I don't, I think, Anna, have you had a conversation with your staff yet?
We have not had a conversation about this particular form, but the bullying harassment policy, people are familiar with that process. This is, I think, more detailed and more confidential. So in particular about, you know, we have some incidences and we've talked about it in my report about SEL, addressing things, the bullying and racist remarks. So we, we've had some issues. So I think this speaks to those better than just the bullying harassment policy. So I, I think once you adopt a form like this, then staff would be informed that this is available. We do have referral forms in the guidance office, so students can self-refer. And we want kids to have that kind of confidential relationship with a counselor. So if something's going on, they have somebody they know they can talk to and it's not going to get spread around the school. Part of that due process is you don't want everybody to know. You want to have the security of saying what you really think happened and not have any retaliation. So it's important, I think, for those reasons.
Joe? And so like with younger kids, I, I think the way I see this panning out is it would be part of the office discipline referral. And if it, you know, had to do with something about racism, name-calling, things like that, then that's when I would make sure that Mrs. Diario or Mrs. Fenrich know about it and that next step with them. So I think the, I don't know, you know, teachers will definitely know about this form once it becomes policy. But the route I'm seeing for younger age kids that make these kinds of statements or actions is through the office discipline referral system that we have. Anything else from anybody?
And what I might ask Deb to do is just set up emails, like, to the Director, you know, instead of the name. Do you understand it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and just say where your office is, maybe.
We're both our offices.
Yeah, true.
Okay, well, please look for the questions. I'm looking for a motion to accept this as a first reading.
A second?
A motion in a second to accept the diversity policy as a first reading. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so we've got review of job descriptions. We've got staff accountant, administrative assistant, curriculum instruction, that's CIA, and Director of Special Services.
The reason, the staff accountant, there's just the highlights that are changing and it's just the adjustments. And there's one addition, he has a lot on, so they're copy over there. The administrative assistants is CIA, the recorder for regular in the school board meetings. And Julie is in here because, you know, her hiring. So we wanted to, and she is, this job description doesn't mean anything, but I just wanted you to be aware of what it was. And I'm going to start doing that with a few others too. I have the person that's in the job currently review it, see if they feel that there's any additions to.
Any questions on the job description? Do we need to approve the man or we just?
I would appreciate it if you would, because when you do, and I don't know why I'm not, I usually put it right on it. That it was the date that we have it approved.
All right.
For the Director of Special Services. So is, this is Julie's job, right? Okay, I wasn't sure if this was over at the elementary school.
No, this is Julie, this is Director of Special Services. The position at the elementary school is. You liked it, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And my only thing, so one of the bullets, complete an annual review and update the annual plan for education of the handicap as prescribed by the state and federal statutes. Is that seriously what they're still calling it?
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that didn't need updating. It should need updating.
I, you know, Julie looked this over and she said, that's, that's it, so.
Okay.
So then I'm looking for a motion to accept these, the updates to these job descriptions. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, then we have the first reading of policies, JLC, JLCA, JLCA dash R, JLCB. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept those as a first reading? All right, motion in a second to accept that group policies as a first reading discussion.
I had a question about the immunization. So do we just go by the state requirements? That's, there just wasn't a list of what that was, so. Yeah, that's, I was like, eh, sorry, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we just, the state, so we're not throwing anything in the.
No, we're not throwing, I mean, this is, this is directly from the management school board policy. And that's, when I give you these for the first reading, I change nothing. And then when I give them back to you, I take out all of the stuff.
Anyone have anything else on these policies? Questions, concerns, comments? All right, so let all those in favor of accepting these policies as a first reading say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, so any other business to be conducted by the board? Does anybody have anything?
I have one thing. District today was an update on the tiles, ATF, this is the second year's tile. These were the publicity photos that were taken. So, but again, thanks to Anna, Joel, Fred, from the ATF.
Do you have any questions for Jim?
Just thank you for.
I just wanted to explain what that was.
Keeping it updated, that's great.
No, some of it, there's some detail.
I know, some of it.
All right, does anybody have anything else? Let's move on to financial report. So Tom, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, you have my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I have two items that occurred after I filed the report to make you aware of. One is that we received an additional $1,568 from Hydro Rebates for the quarter three of 2020. And I had a phone call on Monday with DRA, our tax advisor there, to review revenues. And I think they're, they're all set with the school and they're finishing up with the town to be able to take steps to set a tax rate.
Anyone have any questions for Tom?
Yes, so there, in the proposed budget section, there are a lot of things being, like salaries being removed. I went through and I think it's pretty, I think a lot.
No, yeah, he said something in somewhere, but it's.
Well, that's, I thought I remembered something from our last meeting, but in his overview this time, there wasn't. But when you look through, it's zeroing.
Number one, non-payroll accounts, everything's a non-payroll account that's provided, so.
Okay, because it's zeroing it out and it, like, the totals look like, I don't know, it's just so, it looks faulty to me. There's no payroll. Do we usually do that?
No, he's like giving us like a heads-up kind of a, right, kind of like a, here it is a little ahead of time.
Right, I usually don't give the school board a budget until after we've done the payroll budgeting and merged it together with this stuff. But the request was that we move the process along more quickly. And so this is ready to look at at this point in time.
Okay, that was my only.
Everybody is working for free.
And I was like, why are we removing all the salaries from the budget? What is happening?
It just adds everything else.
All right, does anyone have anything else for Tom? No, everyone's good. All right, curriculum report. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. So I have some questions for you and I just kind of want to explain where some of these questions come from. I was really thinking about 2004 red socks and then kind of backtracking five years to think about where they might have been in 1999. And the reason why I'm doing that is because there's a lot of research around a five-year window for a school improvement process. It often takes about five years. You need to get a lot of traction your first year or two. That way teachers see results and that gives them the encouragement that they need to continue the work that they're doing. There are some really unique challenges in this district as far as what I'm seeing here versus my experience in other schools. And, and that would be, like, if I'm in Lawrence and the school improvement process is being led by a principal, the principal's leading her school and ultimately she's in charge of everybody's evaluations, right? If an improvement process is being led by a dis, at the district level, or an entire district, it's often under the Assistant Superintendent and that person is responsible. In this case, as the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, I have a lot of responsibility, but I don't really have many people under me. So in that case, the board needs to be really clear about what you are expecting and what you would like to see. So that way you can communicate that clearly, so that way people don't think that the changes you would like to see or the improvements you would like to make, whatever goals you would like to have, are not coming from me personally, they're coming down from you. So that's really important for providing, I pride in providing the leadership that would help facilitate the kind of changes that you would like to make. And also, there, I'm not a part of this town as much. I haven't been here as long. So I don't want people to view me as being the agent of change. I work on your behalf, right? You tell me what your destination is and then I set the course. If that makes, right? For instructional practices, I really think that a great companion to PACE, we're talking about PACE and using performance assessments. I think a great companion to that is thinking about how are we going to shift some of our instructional practices? Like, our teachers are really great at direct instruction, but they're not so great at open, you know, asking open-ended questions is an area of growth. So if we kind of focus on that as, as a district, that might be one way to help teachers think about, how could I get to the level that I would like my students to be at? So I'm hoping that I would have the opportunity, maybe before next school year, to provide some professional development in that area. I've included sample curriculum documents that I created for math for the town of Northwood, New Hampshire. And I did a lot of editing for someone, somebody else had left me with BLA documents. And I tried to create a common format, so that way it would be easier for teachers, at least at the elementary level, to shift from math to English Language Arts and understand that the two documents work in very similar ways. So that would be one way for us to create a little bit more structure around what we teach when we teach it. That would help the PLCs provide a point of collaboration, right? We all know what we should be teaching. This is what we're going to be doing. You could use those units to create your performance assessments, right? If you know what your learning targets are and you create your performance assessment, now you can back up your instruction. So that way your students could do the performance assessment. And then finally, I just wanted to add that Ally and Mr. Bogio are really just doing some really great work. I really think that Mr. Bogio has had this vision of helping students achieve at a high level and helping them reach high levels of literacy. And I think that in terms of his team, it's been difficult for him to assemble that, right? I know a principal in Barnstead, New Hampshire, named Tim Rice. Tim has a large school, well, 500 students, maybe K through eight. He's got a background as a high school chemistry teacher. So obviously he struggles with early literacy. So when he goes to hire an assistant principal, he's always looking for that particular skill. Mr. Bogio has not had the opportunity to select someone like that. So I think that having Ally on his team, I've been teasing Ally and I've been calling her Big Poppy, like, she's amazing. So I'm really thrilled about what that will mean for the school going forward over the next few years.
Did you want us to take a few minutes now and talk about, you know, maybe where our individual, you know, either expectations or goals or desires for, or, or, or did you want us to come back with that? Because we can take some time now. I could rattle off, and I'm not going for hours, but, I mean, I could tell you where I'm at. But, I mean, did you, did you want to do that tonight? Because we can take some time.
I, I wouldn't mind taking a few minutes, but I, I also know that we're in COVID, this is a lot. If you want to save some for the spring, I totally understand that.
That's up to you. I mean, like I said, I could overwhelm you.
So maybe just a couple. Being really strategic and specific about how you write them. So if you write that you want to improve literacy outcomes, that's one goal. If you say that we want to improve our, the number of students who are proficient according to the NHSS by 10% per year for the next five years, you could go from 30% to 80% proficiency. At least that's a goal. Maybe you might fall a little bit short and you end at 75%, but at least you've set a high bar to aim for. So if you do that, you're going to, I feel like you're always moving forward, right? Another thing that I think might be helpful, and this would be for you to decide, but when I worked for the town of Reading, there were five elementary schools, two pretty large middle schools and one substantially large high school in that town.
Massachusetts.
Right, in Reading, Massachusetts. So what the superintendent does when he writes the. So what the superintendent does when he writes the goals that he has for the district is he writes out what the goals are, then he assigns the people involved. So maybe it's the principals, maybe it's the instructional coach. Then he'll assign a lead. So the lead might be the assistant superintendent. So it kind of acts like a little constitution to say, these are the things that we're working on. Here are the major people involved in each project. Under each initiative, there might be, I don't know, and other staff is needed, kind of thing. But they're that specific, so that really helps. And given the fact that I am in this interesting organizational structure where I have a lot, I feel like I have a lot of responsibility, but not necessarily a lot of formal authority. My authority is more informal. But to just make it a little bit more clear might be helpful because I want to make sure that we get the momentum that would help us be successful in five years.
So what we've done in the past is, when we've done our, when we've done our goals is we have tried to make them, we're trying to think about what we want our end result to be. And we've tried to develop goals that covered that, but weren't so specific that we were micromanaging and tying people's hands to specific things. And so we tried to be a little bit more open with it. But if that isn't moving us forward to where we need to be, you know what I mean? We can certainly look at specific things and maybe have a little bit more focus in some areas. So if, if, you know, you're going about, you know, your work and saying, this is, this is where I think the school district needs to be. And I mean, you know, something to kind of back up that view. Geez, if the school board was a little bit more focused on this area or this area, you know, we can certainly, we, you know, we work our goals that way. You know, in the past, I think it's been more, I think we've kind of been encouraged to be a little bit more, more up here than down here. Right. But we can certainly, you know, kind of modify that a little bit. Now, hold on one second. So, you know, that's something that we can do. And that might be something that when we come around to goal setting or we can even adjust goals.
Yeah, we can do goals when ever.
Yeah, we can do, we can do goals whenever we want. So I mean, if that's something that you're looking at, oh, I'm hitting a roadblock here and I really, I really need those guys to make some adjustments and fine tuning sooner rather than later. You know, if you tell us that, you know, we can, we can sit down and we can look at that.
I think it's important to have goals that are clearly defined, especially if you can get some quantitative measurement in. Because then it helps determine whether or not we're being successful and whether or not we're making headway. And even if we make a small amount of headway, sometimes that headway can be a little bit harder to achieve in the beginning. But even something small can provide that encouragement. We need to be able to celebrate whatever wins we have and we need to be able to see them. And I think that's a really, that's really critical for helping teachers, like I said, maintain that momentum so that they can continue to do the work that we would like to do all together.
So I think one of the things that we've struggled with and I think everyone on the board will agree is how do we, how do we, yeah, yeah, how do we, how do we attach a measurement to that? How do we attach a measurement? Just to show that we've moved forward.
So in many, in many schools, there's an annual presentation, if not more often than annual regarding data. Whether you have the math assessments, really looking at the math assessment data just so you can see where do we currently stand and where would we like to go? Looking at the NHSS assessment data when that comes out. So that way you can see what is the current reality. It's kind of like, you can't address a problem if you don't know where you stand. So understanding where we're currently at might help us begin to think about how do we move forward. And the other thing that I would say is that as a district, if the board is paying attention to the data, everybody else begins paying attention to the data.
So I kind of think maybe this is what we've been missing. I think the idea of thinking about our staff and, you know, what everybody does, I think, could really help guide our goals and kind of set clear goals and have sort of an end game in mind. And I think honestly, thinking about our goals with that perspective could really reshape and make them productive rather than here's our idea, figure it out. And I think obviously working in conjunction with Wayne, because that's really, you know, we can't direct every single person, but we can work with Wayne, here is what we'd like to see, you know, thinking about our staff and I think kind of figure out how to really make some clear directives. So that is a really exciting.
Holly, you want to say something?
Yeah, and what Kayla just said, I agree with, with her there. And that one thing I did want to say is that, you know, we do, of course, COVID has skewed timelines and everything for everything. But in, you know, for a long time, it, it kind of always feels like, you know, we don't just, the board doesn't get information like annually or even semi-annually. There's, sometimes there's stretches where we feel like we're getting graphs and charts and whatever and practically every, every other board packet. So, so we, we do have over the years, like many, many, many times looked at data regularly. But, so I don't want you to think that we, we don't. But we never did pull it all together, related it to goals. Look, you know what I mean? Looked at it like we would talk about it and look at it and have an idea where we are. But this is kind of taking it to like another step. So, yeah.
Julia?
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think any goal more detailed is, the more attainable it is. Also, the more accountable the people are whose target is to obtain those goals. But I would say that, so I think that's super exciting. And I would think that again, it would go back to Wayne and the administration to figure out how to do that. But we could say, rather than have a general goal of, you know, we want to improve literacy. Well, doesn't everybody want to improve literacy, right? So that's where we go back to what you recommended. Say, hey, listen, our goal as a district is to improve our proficiency by 5% year over year for the next five years.
Yes.
That is what, to me, that's a board level goal to set. And then it goes down to the administration to say, okay, now this is what we, our board has looked at the data, we're going to look YOY, we want 5%. And then, and then there's accountability and there's a very strong, you see the success because I'm sure there would be success in that kind of thing. So I think that kind of, that's the kind of detail you're looking for. And I don't think, we're not going to say, you know, who's going to do that. But I think setting a detailed goal like that is just, is a, is a great, is a great idea. I really do.
Jim, do you have anything?
No, I mean, I think it's a very interesting discussion.
Yeah, and I agree totally with the way Julia explained it or phrased it. And but then the next kind of piece for me is that when we do, I mean, it kind of relates to what I said too, but to take you back on Julia, is when we do get the data, however often we're getting it, we just have to make sure we look at it and go, okay, how is this relating to our goal? Like at each step of the way, make sure we tie it back to the goal and look at it. Because that's definitely the piece that we've been missing. You know, we kind of look at the data, not in a vacuum, but we look at it, talk about it, okay, and then move on.
Yeah, and a lot of times that's it could be a part, it could become a presentation, an annual. Okay, you're going to come to us and you're simply, our goal, our goal is 5%. Here's last year's data. If this year's bad, and this is where we stand, this is how successful we were. And if we fell way short, these are some, maybe some of the changes that we're already thinking about making because we realize we're not making our goals or we exceeded it and this is what really worked. But that presentation of a year-over-year plan, I think really would give me personally and the board a snapshot of how successful those goals are being met. And I think that's a great idea.
And I think that, I think probably some of the struggles that you're finding aren't unique to you. Because I know that I've been on the board, you're my, you're my third curriculum person. All right. And people who have been on the board a while have probably had more. But and what I have found is a lot of times, you know, there's an identification of a problem or an area that needs improvement. And then we talk about it and, oh, that's great. And then I think it's probably kind of feeds into what you were saying is, you know, you, you have a charge, but what kind, but you know, where's your authority? And I think that, I think you're the first one, first curriculum person since I've been here that has actually put it that way.
Yeah, articulated.
And it kind of makes sense that some of these other things that people were saying, yeah, they identified it, but then it didn't go anywhere, probably because of that, you know? So, so for me, I think that we need to look at that and back you up somehow.
I've also identified an issue that I would like to present in the next board meeting. If you're comfortable with that, the issue of fiefdoms, which can occur in any human organization. I think it's been really challenging for a district to have a part-time superintendent. Wayne is aware of that. To have a part-time superintendent and then part-time curriculum directors. Fiefdoms have developed. So I would like to present that idea in terms of, we can think of then, if you identify the problem, then you can address it. And that should also help create the synergy that we want with everybody marching towards the same goal, right? And that collective energy around helping our students.
And I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, because I'm not the smartest person. But you're correcting me for, but I think some of that gets into, you know, district culture too. Because you get into that culture of this is how we've always done it. And I think just about everyone around this table knows how I feel about that phrase. Don't like it at all. Sometimes, sometimes it's fine, but for the most part, you know, when you, when you're, when you're going through, you know, and you're just, you know, doing it and doing it and doing it because maybe there's some vacuums in some different areas that just, you know, had to be filled. And that's just, you know, the comfort level, you know what I mean? So I think sometimes when you're looking to do something new, I think for any of us, you know, that's a little intimidating. You know, oh, I don't know if I want to do something new. I can, I can, I can do this. I can do my mail route in X amount of time. If you're adding extra scans onto what I have to do, well, I don't want to do that because that's going to add extra time. So I think that's a hurdle that we need to get past. And I think we need to find a way to, you know, support forward movement in order for that to happen. But we also don't want to like, you know, lose people or, you know, we don't want, we don't want to like intimidate people or make them feel, especially now, so overworked. But I do believe there's a way to, to do it without losing buy-in.
And reflecting on my experiences in different schools, I served on the board of a charter school in Salem, New Hampshire, the Virtus Charter, you know, Virtus Academy of Arts. I've been in public schools. And it's really interesting when you have a high-performing culture and people are really satisfied with their jobs. What happens is that when there's an opening, like every spring, if things, good things are happening here, people will start looking for those openings. They don't want to play for Team Hinsdale, just like people would want to play for the Red Sox, right? So, so that's how, it's not just about the turnaround process. You begin building a really positive culture when people want to be here because they're excited by what's happening. When I was on the board of the Virtus Charter School, what happened, if you can imagine, every paraprofessional had a master's degree. And they wanted to be in the school because they really felt that integrating arts with math and science, that this was really innovative work and they wanted to be a part of that, even if it was just for a year or two, to get a sense of what does that look like and what kind of experience that I could gain to bring to another school at some other point. So I just want to keep that in your, in your mind, that if you're building something really good, right, if you build it, they will come, right?
And it feeds into, I think, what we kind of wanted to achieve with our last set of goals is, you know, we recognize some deficiencies and, you know, we wanted to create a better culture. And, you know, we've again tried to be a little bit more open-ended, for lack of a better term. And maybe, maybe there's some things that we need to drill down on. I think that as we do that, we need to do some of that as a board, but I don't think we should be doing that in isolation. I think we should probably be pulling people in to make sure so that we can get the buy-in and we can make sure everyone's concerns are at least addressed. I mean, that seems to make sense to me. Kayla?
That was going to be my next comment, is that when we are looking at data and, you know, we can't really break that apart. We don't know what assessments are taking place in the classroom, how the overall feel is. So I think having Kat come in when we start having these discussions, because we can say, we want to see 25% growth. And then Kat can be like, well, you're hilarious because here's real life. You know, we can have these big plans, but I think having people who are in it and know what's happening and know kind of how to, how to start the change we want to see. Having those people involved in our goal setting will make for more informed goals and realistic and hopefully attainable.
So Wayne, correct me if I'm wrong, we typically have the goal-setting stuff with the board and the superintendent, but we can invite whoever we want in.
We've done it in the past. We've, quite often we've had the whole A-team.
I remember one time we did it all together.
Yeah, we did that before you were on the board. That's the typical way we did it. And then we kind of got away from that for a while scheduling, maybe. I don't remember why exactly. We started mixing it up.
But we can pull people in, absolutely, you know, to talk and whatever. And even, and even then if we, because we don't even have to do it all in one night, right? We can pull people in, we can like pull someone in and then come up with an idea, then pull a larger group in.
Yeah, we could focus on sections.
So we can really kind of look at, look at the whole goal-setting process differently.
Well, we have different categories, so maybe pulling people in who, you know, have to do with that category and then move on to the next. So you don't have everyone sitting there for stuff that they're like, this is not.
So I understand the fiefdom, but this is kind of for Wayne. Okay, so this is kind of for Wayne, but is that along the same line of what Karen Craig would call silos? Is that the same thought as our silo discussion we used to have a lot?
Yeah, probably. We're pretty close to that.
Okay, okay, just to wrap my head around it.
So do you mind expanding on fiefdom for Julia?
So, you know, I can include an article that might explain a little bit more or provide a little bit more detail. But fiefdoms occur when there's a lack of leadership and people don't know what to do and they're nervous. It's kind of interesting to me that as I go around the district, there are a lot of people who are very, you can also spot them because people are not only a little bit fearful about getting in trouble, they're also kind of rigid. And that's because they're afraid of, like, the expectations aren't really clear. So it makes them just really focus in on their own work, which is understandable, right? The problem is that when people do that, it makes collaboration really hard. And if you want to have a highly collaborative culture, you first have to address, well, what are the structural issues that are causing the fiefdoms to develop, right? Fiefdoms don't have vision, they're fearful, they're not looking towards a goal. So you kind of have to provide a little bit more structure and not in a bad way. But I think goals possibly could say, this is what we're heading towards or this is what we would like. And then you can begin to think about, well, how would, how would these people collaborate? What I said about the superintendent in Reading, Massachusetts, establishing those teams and expecting people, right? Like, you're going to be working on this problem, here's the lead, here's the person responsible. It provides a little bit more clarity and a little bit more security. And I'm wondering if that might be helpful. Thank you.
So that's like, that's just going to the silos because they don't collaborate.
The silos and the independent contracts.
It's another word for silo, yes.
Yep, and Karen used to talk about.
Karen used to silence.
And she would say independent contracts, yep.
Thank you. Have a way to maybe start moving away from them.
Yeah, it's like a bigger picture looking at the silo and, yeah, exactly.
And I just also wanted to add that looking through the sheets that you included, I really, really, really love the planning for instruction and then the assessment. I think this type of thing really feeds into PACE because it's the formative assessment, the summative assessment, getting our teachers thinking about, here's my lesson, how am I going to assess my students as they're learning? I feel like this is really the goal with PACE. So this type of form, I think, might help wrap. Because I know some teachers have been struggling with the idea, but seeing it written out like this is like, oh, duh, of course I do that.
Do we not have something written out for PACE?
I don't know what is written out for our teachers, but I really. I don't know what is written out for our teachers, but I really love, it just puts it all together.
I think Karen's on, could we ask Karen? She wants to chime in on that.
Sure, can you, can you ask the question again?
So you are, you don't probably have our packets, right?
I just got it a little while ago, so I haven't seen the whole thing.
So in Kat's report, she's included, um, some, are these sheets that you created?
Those are curriculum documents.
Okay, curriculum documents. So the one I'm looking at is about, it's for math. And it's just planning for instructions, like, what are you going to use? What are your resources? The I-ken statement. And down at the bottom, she has the assessments. So it's like the formative assessments, the summative assessments. So I think having this setup kind of shows teachers that they're already doing what we're trying to move towards with PACE, but it kind of breaks it down and really spells it out.
So I, um, I don't have that in front of me, Kayla, so I can't speak directly to it. It sounds like that's a little bit more involved, but we do have a form, uh, similar to that that has teachers spell out their, um, all of their, uh, assessments, with, with their, um, essential questions. Um, and I, I don't, I'm not sure that what else is on that that's not on the one that we have. It just sounds like yours might be a little bit more in-depth than the one we have. But yes, in the, um, curriculum instruction, uh, for all of our teachers, they do fill out a form similar to that.
So for each unit, Kayla, if you're looking at each unit in that curriculum document, you would see the learning goals.
Yep.
Clearly spelled out. Teachers can use that to develop their performance assessment.
Right.
If you know what your performance assessment is, then like I said, you can back up your instructions. Some of your students could actually do your performance assessment.
Yeah, I really, really love these. I think maybe making them available to all of our teachers, just so, when you look at it, it just, it's so beautifully. I just really enjoy organizations, so.
So these are from Northwood. What I would like to do is work with teachers to customize them and align, like, if we're using Bridges and not Eureka.
Right.
We can align our resources, right? But that might involve shifting around some of the units.
Right.
But that's okay, at least we have, it's always easier to start with a, a Word document that you can edit rather than starting from scratch.
So I'm hearing that we're all on board with, uh, you know, fine-tuning our goals and, um, being able to develop some more focus on them. And, um, you know, doing them differently than we've done, say, in the recent past, because I can only go back so far. You know, so now realistically, we're in budget season.
Yes, that's what I was just thinking.
So.
It has to be extra budget.
So definitely not going to happen tomorrow. But is there, Kat, something that we can do in the short term, uh, before we dive into a, a reworking of goals?
Could you clarify what you're interested in? Is there something you want me to?
I don't, I don't know, I mean, because, because we're looking at supporting what you're doing.
Okay.
Uh, we're looking at redoing goals, but redoing goals is not going to happen right now just because we're in the middle of budget.
I, I think that this year is just a really tricky year with everything going on.
Absolutely.
And I am comfortable with waiting until next year. This is, I would like to start the initiative next year.
Okay.
I'm doing a little, laying a little bit of groundwork and kind of, I'm doing a lot of marketing. Wayne is going to be doing a lot of teaching.
Yeah.
This is, this is kind of where at, in the midst of all of this. But I think it would be helpful to really think about if we're going to launch an initiative, we have that five-year window.
Okay.
What you don't want is to have it fizzled out because then teachers would say, oh, that didn't work.
And, and that's been our history, right? That, that has definitely been our history, yep.
And I think this kind of feeds into though, like, all of the work we're doing. I think right now is kind of the, obviously like not right right now, but we're working on the behavior and the culture shift. I think this feeds, they all just feed into each other because you can't get to academics until you handle behavior and culture. And they're doing it all together and saying, you know, we need to give this a good five years. Because with the behavior stuff too, we've just had a meeting and we're discussing that. And, you know, keeping in mind with that stuff too, you're, you're going to see improvements, but it's not going to be this drastic change. You have to give stuff time to work. So I think it all goes together.
And, and, you know, we, we definitely called out, you know, pacing our goals because we don't want that to fizzle.
Right.
We want to keep that moving.
Right.
And it was starting to slow down. It was like, so, so I know for me, it was like that needed to be, you know, pushed forward in our goals, so. Okay, cool. So if you're, if you're good to waiting till the next goal-setting session, then that's cool with us.
And we can push it up for some, you know, see how things go.
Yeah, we fairly June and the, the spring is a little more open.
Yeah, so we could do, you know, spring and hopefully things will be calmer by then.
That would be nice. All right, does anybody else have anything for Kat? No, and Kat, was there anything you wanted to add or was that everything?
That's everything, thank you.
Then we can be done with you for now. All right, so let's move on to the technology report.
You didn't skip her this month.
For last one, you're right, I think I skipped facilities. I skip one every, every month.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have my report before you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions for Deb? Kayla?
I do. So do we know, Deb, yet what the impact of the reduced free and reduced lunch applications are going to be?
Oh, shocks. I have that on my, at, at work on a piece of paper. Uh, I'm sorry, I did do the calculation, um, at the end of, um, October and it was significant. But what I'm understanding, um, is that, um, from people listening to the commissioners' call that lots of school districts are screaming on this one, um, because, you know, they were giving away free meals. So I believe, Andy may have to correct me if I'm wrong on this one. Um, I believe that they are going to use last year's figures, um, to calculate, uh, free and reduced. Did I hear that or read that in a synopsis, Andy?
Yes, they're using last year's figures even on attendant, on enrollment, on a lot of different things because of the changes that are happening this year.
Okay, that's good. I was also going to say, yeah, because you also gave unemployed families an extra $600. So you might have bumped families out of qualifying super temporarily. So that's fantastic, that makes me.
Anyone else have anything for Deb? No? All right, Deb, easy night for you tonight.
Thank you, sir.
All right, principals' reports, and, um, this is FreeTag, I believe you're up first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to express the gratitude from the staff again about the two full-time ancillary support teachers that you allowed us to hire. It's made a huge difference, I think, in people's ability to feel that sense of job satisfaction, less frustration with having to teach in school and remotely at the same time. So I think it's been a big help, thank you. You have got the letter from Dr. Chan that Nurse Alneritis gave to me. We did have some issues with parents. I had them showing up on my doorstep to argue about, I want my child in school. My medical practitioner says they can be here. And, and it's been kind of an interruption for me, but it's been a good thing that we got the letter because he sent it to all the health professionals in the state. They saw it and said, oh, I'm not going to ID the school nurse anymore. Oh, good, which was a big relief. Thanks, and I'm glad that you took a stand on that. We've got a lot of teachers acting on the multi-tiered support system committee that I think that people who are originally on the committee want to stay on that committee. They think it's that important. You mentioned that, how it's an initiative that we don't want to drop. We do have some data. I think in the past, Joe and I have always done those, um, strategic plans to improve reading and math based on the math data, those kids below the 40th percentile. We decided that was the unit that we were going to use previously. If they score below the 40th percentile, and we like the math data because it's growth data that we can see every year, it's consistent. So I think Joe and I have used those plans in the past, but we'll get some information for you from our building based on how the teachers and the PLCs are using the data at this time. There is significant, I think, impact of not being in school on both reading and math across the board. So teachers have the data and they're using it right at this time. And again, I've just given you the numbers that we have for remotely. We had a lot of kids return and a couple have already left because they don't like wearing a mask all day. It does simple that, but I'll take any questions you have.
Does anybody have questions for Ann? Oh, come on, put her on the hot seat a little bit.
No, you just say with people that just started back on Monday. They came back on Monday and had two already today, want to go back home because they don't want to wear the mask all day.
I don't blame them, I don't like wearing it.
I don't like wearing it either, but we are enforcing it. It's a constant, you know, because they do slip down off their noses, it's constant.
Yep. Anything, nothing? All right, then I guess, uh, thank you, Mrs. FreeTag, and we will put Mr. Bobio on the hot seat next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As always, you got my report. I do have three things that I wanted to report on also and ask for some assistance with. The first one is to link us to the comment. If you want to do the suicide prevention training that, or at least part of it, that Mrs. Don you did for the elementary staff, there's a YouTube link that's private that I could send to Mrs. Dario to distribute to you if you so desire.
I would like to.
I'll send it out to Ann, it's a computer called TBR for all of you. And then the second one, as you may have heard, Mr. Eastman today alluded to, uh, rec basketball and the decision made by the board tonight, having something to do with the elementary school. As he talked to me today about having rec basketball, and I said that that was a little bit above my pay grade at this time, but I would be happy to bring it to the board's attention that there's a request in the rec department to use, uh, the elementary gym for recreational basketball. Very preliminary at this time. He said he's willing to do whatever, uh, safety things seem necessary. I told him my biggest concern is I've been to the games on Saturday morning and there's no room to social distance in our gym. So I was assuming parents would have to drop their children off and come back in an hour. But I just told him I would bring it to your attention and, I mean, he's not expecting a decision tonight, I don't think. I don't think he'll be starting rec basketball until after the holidays, but, um, that's out there.
Right, so, um, you know, multiple hats here. Because I chair Parks and Rec if anyone didn't know, so I, I, I do that too.
With it and everything.
I know, planning board, Parks and Rec, I just need to.
Get it all tonight.
Need to retire. So this has been mentioned briefly at, at Parks and Rec. And, um, we, you know, talked about the school's decision as far as not having outside groups. We got those back and forth. And I think that if we're going to have the discussion, I honestly feel like it should be coming from the program director because the program director is overseeing all of that. So that's something that I think Brett needs to work out with Sarah. And if, you know, Sarah determines that, you know, this is, and she, obviously she'll talk to Jill and stuff like that, that this, the proposal should really come from her, is my personal opinion. It's also my opinion as Parks and Rec chair, so I'll say the same thing at Parks and Rec. But, um, that's just kind of where I'm at. And then we keep talking about chain of command and all that, and it just feels like a jump to me. Ann?
And I think, as a Parks and Rec member.
Yes, because, because it, it and I are on all these boards and committees together, so.
I think it should go to the Parks and Rec Board first.
And it hasn't.
Parks and Rec Board presented to the board.
Yeah.
So that was going to be my thing. We didn't do anything with soccer.
They didn't use, they, they use school, they use town.
They have other, they have other deals. But they, this is like an inside thing and we have the facilities.
Yep.
You know, the school, I should say, has the facilities, but it hasn't, it hasn't been more than a passing discussion at, at Parks and Rec. It hasn't really been discussed in depth at all with the full group and it hasn't been worked out with the program directors. So I feel like, I feel like we're missing some steps.
Is it going to be an issue that we don't need to get into?
I was going to ask that timing.
It starts after the holidays. Usually basketball starts after Christmas, so it's not.
So, and, and I can always email Sarah unless I know that, you know, it came up and we're not, we're not jumping over you, you, here it is, boom. Figure it out, come to us, we will talk about it. With no, with no guarantees, because we may decide that we can't do it. I, I'm not saying that we should or we shouldn't. I'm just saying that it's, that we're, that we, it's been.
It's a town program, so Jill has.
Right, Jill needs to be involved in it too, so I, I.
The sport, should not even be discussing it.
Correct.
Your board.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so I just want to throw that out there.
So, yeah, getting Sarah, she has time to create.
Oh, yeah, I believe.
Which she probably is already thinking about, because she's on it.
Yep. So I, so I don't mean to derail anything, I just wanted to.
No, that's, that's fine. So do you want me to not communicate with Mr. Eastman right now?
God, this is like a Parks and Rec meeting. I really feel that he needs to talk to Sarah. You know, but I also don't feel like, you know, I don't want to throw foot key in the middle of that on you. You know what I mean? This is kind of tough.
Does he report to Sarah?
He's supposed to, yes.
Oh, so yeah, then, yeah.
Well, and so Joe could even just say like, I'm waiting for my board directive and they're waiting for your board.
Why don't you, why don't you let them know that I'm going to talk to Sarah and then they can work it out? And that way, it, that way it doesn't put you in any position, um, and I guess I'll.
In your spirit, fun.
In my spirit.
So the, the other thing is when we went to no Friday afternoons, I had a request from, uh, a parent of the preschool, um, population, a regular parent who had paid the full $600 tuition for the year, uh, saying that now he has to pay for childcare at that time when he didn't have to before. And he had requested, uh, some refunds for that. And, um, I just wanted to bring that forward to you because it would be him and there's two other families that have paid $600. I did some math and I think a refund of, if you decided to do so, to refund them $100 would cover the classes that they missed. But Mr. Woolridge had pointed out, though, what if we go remote? Because then they couldn't still be engaged in, in the learning at that time. So I don't know what we want to do about that.
That kind of opens the can of worms, doesn't it?
But if we're not, if they paid for a service we're not providing, we should refund the money. So if we go remote, I think we need, well, no, because preschool can't be remote, right?
Well, can baby go?
They can, yeah, they can do it remote.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I guess we're technically still providing it, but we're not offering a remote option or anything for Friday afternoon, so I think we need to.
Oh, Friday for sure, yeah, Friday for sure.
If we have a remote option when we go remote, that is, I think we could revisit that when we get there.
Ann?
I have a question that might answer this. If, um, if we go, because of one COVID case, we go remote, are we still keeping Friday afternoons the way they are? Because if we are, then yeah, the refund would be, do you understand what I'm saying?
I would say yes.
I would say yes because of the time period.
And they still need, because teachers still need their planning time up there and this and all.
Yeah.
So then, then in that case, that would, that would take care of that problem.
I would still say in the interest of community spirit, you should take a motion to everyone.
For the Friday afternoons.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I'm wondering, I do think that we do need to offer that, um, to anybody that paid for Friday afternoon. Wondering how $100 for two and a half or three hours a week, how, how long are they normally in the preschool all week?
Well, it's five days a week from 12:20 to 3:15, and it's $600 for the whole.
Okay, I didn't know that it was only afternoons. Okay, so that makes more sense, yeah, okay. Yeah, I, I would make a motion that we refund the Friday afternoon portion of the paid preschool for those, for those that pay for the preschool.
Motion in a second to refund that money, any further discussion? Motion and a second to refund that money, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, those are my comments and questions, is there any questions that I could answer? Any questions for Joe?
Well, I would just ask Joe to speak, I was surprised at Ann's comment that they're already lost in more work. How are your new lead class students doing? I know one day preschool is kind of hard to say, but you have quite a few of them.
I went around and tried to check in with them, and they seem to be doing pretty well. It is a big change because obviously at home, we're in the mask, so I told families that, you know, they get really claustrophobic around it, that we'll find a way to take them outside and give them a special mask break, which is really kind of against our policy or practices, right, for everybody, but I felt like getting them back in and helping them to adjust would be important. So, I don't think we've had anybody back out right now.
Yeah, certainly would be, it's gonna be a transition, especially for the younger kids, to go from being home all day back in the classroom, so they're not only just adjusting to that, they're adjusting to the structure of the classroom again. It's like when everybody goes back to school, you know, at the end of the school year, that, oh, wait, no, I can't just talk when I want to, that kind of thing. So, that adjustment for the younger kids, but I'm glad it's going well, I appreciate the effort on both schools' parts to bring those kids back.
And she did have a question. So, this is kind of a question for the board first and then Joe. So, the back to school plan with all the amended stuff that we added in and everything, was the original plan that elementary students would have that recess was a mask break or no? Because I was remembering that that was, our original plan was recess was a mask break.
I don't remember that.
But I can't, but I mean, I should have gone back and looked, because the other day Aubrey came home and was talking about running around with her mask, she said actually when it was cold it helped, so I kept her warmer. But she started talking about it, and I was like, hmm, I thought recess was a mask break because it was outside, so.
I don't remember that, I remember any, on school property unless you're eating.
Yeah, see, I thought for the middle high school, but the elementary school we discussed, and they were gonna have the afternoon mask break also, or morning, whichever one it was, with snack. It was the 15 minutes for snack, 15 minutes outside mask break.
I seem to, I don't remember recess being a mask break, but you know, this was months ago, but I, I seem to remember that if the elementary school mask breaks were gonna be, like, built in kind of at a teacher's discretion when they could get them out, I didn't, but remember it being tied to recess, but I do remember mask break for more prominent in the elementary plan than.
Right, because in the middle high school, it's like when you're eating, you get to take it off, other than that.
So, we'd have to go back and.
I would think recess would be the worst possible mask break.
Because you're running around.
Because they're, well, because you're, you know, when they have a mask break or snack, a snack time in their classroom, they're at their desks. We are monitoring their social distancing. When they're at recess, you know, we're doing the best we can with that, but we don't have nearly as much control. So, if there's gonna be mask break, I would, I would say they need to be when they're in a controlled classroom situation, where it can be in their, in their seats.
We had said we wanted them outside, because the data shows outside there, the risk of transmission is lower.
Let Joey actually answer your question, because three people answered your question.
So.
So.
Well, I wanted clarification on what, because I know we made changes and stuff to the plan that they had, so I just wanted to kind of clarify. But, so, is, are any of the recess, is there any point of recess that is a mask break or no?
Yes.
Okay.
At the, at the end of recess, they are, I, I supervise a recess because of the way the schedule is set up, and I ask if you want a mask break or you want to keep playing. And if some kids want a mask break and some kids want to keep playing, then I take the five kids that want a mask break and have them spread out even further than six feet, they're big circles, and they take a mask break at the end of recess, which is really helpful because they've been running around.
Right.
So, sometimes they just don't want to quit though, they want to keep playing until the last minute. But every supervisor of a recess offers the mask break at the end to, you know, help them the, the running around like a thing and get some relief from that, but it's really spread out in a big circle. And then their teachers are encouraged when the weather's nice to take kids outside for a mask break and the same thing. And sometimes they do some movement breaks like the dance thing, or they might do Simon Says, some, some activity while they have their mask off, but they're spread way out, and and that's how I understood the direction was that masks would be on during recess, and still enforcing as much social distancing as we can, and that we would take them outside for mask breaks as needed during the day, and, and it's worked out well because the little kids just sitting in their rows is not conducive for them, so getting them outside has two positive impacts of getting the mask off and also getting them some movement.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, that's great.
That makes me a little.
Any other questions for Joe? No? Alright, then we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Jerry, you have my report, I'm happy to answer any questions, there's just so much happening here right now. Sorry to keep track of it, but in my report at least I cover, I cover as much as possible.
Does anybody have anything for Wayne?
That usually happens.
The only thing that I have, and you and I talked about this a little bit earlier, when you were going down for the communications, I think that the part we had for internal communication was kind of external, so I think that if we're using, you know, some of the recent communications we've done as an example, you know, the board has, you know, put out what we said we're gonna put out, and there's been a lot of good support, you know, from the district as far as, you know, additional messages here and there, like election day and the half day, Fridays and stuff like that. But I want to make sure that we're not missing, you know, some of the fine details, you know, that doesn't come from the board, that comes from, you know, you folks, you know, as far as exactly how stuff is gonna work, with the nitty gritty that parents may need to know, students may need to know, staff may need to know, because I just wanted to make it clear that, you know, that part's not gonna come from us, we're gonna put that overarching message, and the rest is, is, you know, you guys, so I just want to make sure that that's. That's all I have.
It's, it's really difficult, you know, because like, email is, has become the most prevalent way for communicating some of the things, and, and sometimes you just don't really know how. You know, we get the reports on the emails, whether it's been blocked or whether it's been read, but, you know, it could mean somebody just clicked on it.
It could.
Oh, sure.
Not really, not really read it, you know?
Yep, absolutely.
You know, I think somehow we have to keep on encouraging parents to visit the website where the updates are. You know, that's the same thing, I think, that happened with parent-teacher conferences in our building, of doing them by phone or remote. People aren't as aware of them, and they're not aware of the processes, but it's how do you make sure they know that it's there, right?
And I know, and I know I miss emails because there are just so many coming in these days, so I mean, it does happen. Yeah.
But with that, so use the sign up for the parent-teacher conferences, I think it's maybe a mobile issue, so if you're using your phone and you go to sign up for a parent-teacher conference, the only teachers who came up were, had the last name that started with a B, and I couldn't go forward, backward, I couldn't click on a different, anything.
Yeah, on the website they actually have links for like, data something and something.
Okay, so on the mobile app, that's not coming up, so I know I have that problem, and then I did see a few other, and Victoria Lenahan actually did the PTA post, that was actually how I ended up seeing it, and said that probably from a desktop is the way to go. So, just to heads up, there was an issue with the.
So, that's thing, it's a thing called signup genius, and we don't pay for that, so we don't get all the full full power in it, I guess you could say.
Full functionality.
Yeah, so, so that's probably the issue.
Yeah. But I mean, emailing the teacher is always.
I guess I would say then, you know, because we are all, I mean, have been for years inundated with electronic communications, but, you know, we're doing everything we can with the, with all calls and with the emails, with the, with social media, but when it comes to something like student-teacher conferences that are so critical, especially now for parents to have this long, long communication with a teacher that, that is critical and probably not happening as often as it would in a normal circumstance, is, do we do mailings?
I was just thinking that we could.
What, we, I mean, maybe something like that, something that is, something like, don't forget to sign up, but you can give a clear instruction. I mean, I know, I still get my mail and look through it and took it, so I, I might miss the emails, but maybe a day or two, but I'm gonna get to my mail, so I think if it's something that's important, that kind of an announcement, I feel like maybe we need to take a step back to the, to the way it's always been done, and, and do some mailings.
Yep.
And that was kind of what I was wondering, so I know the newsletter is now also an email, but again, my Gmail sorts my mail and puts all of that stuff in my updates, which I don't get a notification for, and if I sit down, I can probably figure it out, but I'm sure I'm not the only one. So, I don't ever get a notification, I actually just saw all of these newsletters, I was like, oh, the newsletters being emailed to us. Could we, is it possible to start sending home the Friday newsletters again?
Well, since we don't have the Friday folders, you know, right now at the elementary school.
Can't they just stick them in their backpacks?
We, you know, have.
That's the Friday folder.
Friday folders.
I know, but I mean, my kid comes home with schoolwork.
Well, we're sending the schoolwork home.
So, why can't I get more?
I mean, I think.
I get my mail every day, I don't.
I think at least for right now, some mailings, some mailings make sense.
Yeah, I think, like, the Friday newsletter is so, that Joe does, it's really, like,
I mean, I don't.
Spells out what's coming up, and I put it on my fridge and I don't forget.
I don't know that we can necessarily do a mailing every week.
No, it's.
Not a mailing. I mean, my kid is coming home from school, she's.
It's kind of like a Friday folder, but not.
I'm not.
And they're bringing home homework, and they're bringing paper home from school and form of homework, I don't.
Well, and they're in school, they.
See, that's what Jack will be sending on the Friday. And my updates. I think any way we can get news out is ideal, so I would recommend that we go back to sending home a paper update on Friday.
Especially if we're finding that people are missing it, you know?
Right, yeah, communication is communication, and communication is key, and extremely important. Right, everywhere, every, every venue we have to make that happen, I think, would be happening.
Yep.
Well, the timing is good because we're going to the second quarter.
Oh, right.
Okay, perfect.
I don't want to add stuff to people, but I just really think having that piece of paper was.
Helpful.
Yes, super.
Okay. Of course.
So, are you suggesting that at that high school, if we start doing the Friday newsletter, protect it?
Well, you guys have always done it online, so it's like in my brain, it's different.
Previous administrative assistant.
Yeah.
Phenomenal. We have a new person on staff, and it takes tremendous amount of time each day to be period attendance.
Okay.
We have remote learners, onsite learners, and we have kid door present onsite but sick, who's sent them home. It's tremendous amount of time each day to be period attendance for our students, but we have not been able to do electronic newsletter very often this year.
Okay.
I just want you to know, so if you're asking us to do a weekly newsletter, I mean, I can find somebody.
I think if you.
I don't want to add.
No, do, like, obviously if you are.
It's already being created at the elementary school, it sounds like, so what we're asking is you put it out on a piece of paper.
So, why don't we?
Next question is, I hope you got the letter we sent home, because I, we sent home parent-teacher conferences, the home, but the mail, mail letter, and we posted it on the website and we let people know that it was coming up.
I think I did get that, that sounds familiar.
My husband would have gotten it, and of course not totally.
Well, guys are horrible, so, yeah.
I did not get that, so. There's a good chance that someone in my household did, though.
So, why don't we, so why don't we do that at the elementary school and see how it goes? Are we still on Wayne?
I think so.
I lost track momentarily.
Yeah, we did.
Probably.
We think you did some, stop laughing.
You could easily. Does anyone have anything else for Wayne? Alright, because yes, you could easily throw me off. Alright, so let's blast through these community reports that we've already done apparently. So, personnel, Polly?
We are starting, we have negotiations scheduled, we met today, and we have more scheduled, so that's going well so far.
Alright, health and wellness.
We did have a meeting, we did postpone the long square until the COVID situation has been stabilized. That's the main point, I came out of that meeting, and we do have another meeting scheduled for January.
Ready, staff development.
You skipped budget committee.
Did I skip budget?
That's why I was like, wait, that's me, Polly was next.
I just turned the page and checked it off. See, every month, every month, there's one of them.
It's something.
Alright.
We got, got town budget books, and just this week, and we are working on scheduling a meeting, so that's where we are.
Good luck. Legislative, legislation, NHSBA.
We don't really think legislation or NHSBA, but I did want to thank the district again for handling the election up here at High School. I think it was really great, so sort of to help with election legislative action.
Alright, emergency management. Nothing, Wyndham Career Center, anything? No? Alright, HASP, and that's me, alright, so we met just before the meeting, let's see, Mary Ann gives update on the waiver, there's a waiver on how we can do some of the 21(c)(2) monies, so that has been, let's see, that has gone to the, the state's requested that, and help me out, I'm just getting exhausted.
The state, the central government has given the money, but the state hasn't finished studying the guideline.
Right, alright, so Mary Ann's looking at different scenarios that we maybe have used those funds.
We can send them to her and she'll send them to the category.
And we don't know when those funds are actually gonna be available to us. Alright, so, Mary Ann did get some money for $2,000 for activity boxes, and she's getting $2,000 more for more activity boxes.
That's from the NAD, not regional.
Yes, MRAC.
Yeah.
I'm just about out, my memory's out as far as what other acronyms stand for. And Mary Ann's gonna be running early release programming, that's for the, for Fridays, for one to six, starting on the 13th at the elementary school.
Oh, nice.
Yay.
And then she's gonna try and do something for the middle school at some point, but she's gonna be able to help out with some of those parents that will need the extra help at the elementary school.
That will be a big relief.
And then, Mr. Fields had a successful bike rodeo day with his bike shop, where he was able to clear out a whole lot of bicycle stuff for you to people who wanted them. And that's the HASP update. As far as selectmen go, they've been focusing a lot on the election, which we just had, and they are looking at tax setting, Jill gave a kind of tax setting one-on-one workshop to the selectmen recently. So, I don't want to say too much about the tax rate at this point because there's still variables, but they're looking at tax setting.
We're, I'm sorry, when you did the tax setting workshop, was that like in a regular selectman meeting?
It was a regular selectman meeting for the selectmen, she would like to do one for the general public, but.
Did you, did you see it, or was it just, was it good?
Yeah.
Because I think the budget committee would be like, no, okay.
It was fine.
I was just like, I think the budget committee would be interested in that.
That would be definitely a budget.
Yeah.
I mean, I've sat in on a lot of tax setting at this point, so.
So, you understand it, like, I don't think the budget committee understands.
So, I sat through it, and I was like, yeah, yeah.
That's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're like.
Yeah, you know, but no, I think Jill did a good job. Yeah, you know, um, but no, I think Jill did a good job, and, uh, she was, you know, talking about if you wanted to do one for some other people.
I'm excited to learn about it.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's, it's interesting how, it's interesting all the stuff that, that factors into it, you know, with revenues and valuations and all of that, and how they use the unassigned funds balance, and, you know, I've, you know, for several years now noted, you know, how the amount of money that's typically taken to offset taxes to buy down the tax rate is largely proportional to the amount of money that we give back.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so, so what we do, and I don't think many people realize that, but what we do really does affect the selectmen's ability to, uh, to buy down the tax rate.
Absolutely.
You know, and the fact that we, you know, I mean, run a pretty tight ship, you know, for the most part, but the fact that we can do that and turn money back does help the taxpayers in ways I don't think that they really get.
We need to get that message out better.
Because I, I, I just, I, I think that's one of those, you know, hidden truths that nobody really understands or really knows about because it's not out there.
And their eyes glaze over when we talk about it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing, that would be like so beneficial for all, like, the whole community to understand.
Yes.
But who is, who is gonna go to a tax setting forum? We can't get them to go to.
I'm glad I've been there, but yeah.
Okay, well, other than you.
Right.
I think it would be interesting, but.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's about, that's about all the selectmen stuff, and if I don't believe our selectman rep is on, if she was, I would ask her if we had anything.
No, not there.
So. Okay. All right, so move on to facilities.
Um, so we talked about the, the digital side, um, we did have a conversation, um, about a possible rebate through Erosource for the new boiler, but it turned out that we didn't qualify for that, so that's a little bit of bad news. I don't have my notes from the meeting, I don't know what it did with, so I don't know, Julie, I'd refer to you if you had anything.
Yeah, no, I don't have, I didn't have my notes either, but we, a lot of the conversation focused on the, on the sign. We, we touched briefly on, we got some Bleacher information from Sean as well, um, and that kind of, and, and then what we really started to talk about was how we were gonna handle a CIP for the next couple of years, and how far out we should demonstrate that, and how we would present that to the taxpayers, so that's really kind of what we're not boys, as I recall the majority of the meeting.
And then we have another meeting coming up on that 20.
All righty. Um, community connections, um, Kayla, you want to take that?
Um, I was actually going to ask, I know originally we had discussed maybe trying to do some kind of a Zoom forum. Oh. So, and, because you were learning how to kind of run meetings online, and we never.
I can do it now.
Right, and that, when we discussed it originally, you were like, well, I'm learning.
Right.
So, and I was like, well, I'm not.
Right.
So, uh, we should definitely further.
So why don't we, why don't you and I talk about that, maybe we can present something to, to the folks.
Just to kind of get that on everyone.
All right.
Thinking, but other than that, we're just kind of doing the Facebook.
Yep.
Communication, and I think that is definitely an avenue people see.
Yes.
So, and we have turned off commenting, just so we don't have to police it nonstop.
And that's nice.
Yeah, so, I think that's pretty much it, right?
I think so. All right, behavioral support team.
So we just met. Julie, do you want me to do this, or do you want to?
You can do it, it's fine.
Um, yeah, so we just met, and we are looking into budget, but, uh, I think Sarah and Tim are going back to Eric Mann, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're getting a new quote where, so it's been kind of, Eric Mann's been working with the elementary school, and then he's been working with the middle high school, but it's been separate, so we want to sort of merge the two together, so, one, it will save us money.
Right.
They'll be training together, and two, it'll sort of lend itself to the collaboration that we want to see. So, um, yeah, I think Tim, Sarah, Joe, and Anne have all been working closely together, and they have fabulous groups, they have.
Yeah, great groups of people.
Both buildings, so there's a lot of work happening and a lot of work to do.
It does seem like, I think it was good from a fresh perspective for me, because it was my first meeting yesterday, that I think the initial board directive was for this to be a district-wide initiative, that we speak the same language, uh, in between both schools and et cetera, and it's kind of drifted away from that a bit, um, to be a building initiative. So I think they got a pretty strong directive from us that we'd like, I think, is the board to come, bring that back into district focus, uh, and that was very well received. And we also suggested that they, you know, that we go back to Eric and say, listen, if we pull this back to the district level as well, there certainly should be, because we got a, we got a quote, elementary school and the high school got separate quotes from, from him as to what the price would be for next year, uh, almost the same amount, but bid separately, we really should have come in at the district level. So, it was about 50% more, last year it was $10,000, this came in almost 16, so we're going to go back and have those conversations.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so that was really our main focus, was, I think, Tim and Sarah worked fabulously together, so that's a really strong, you know, connection between the two buildings, which is really great. So I'm excited to see where it goes, but I'm definite that we're to come way back down. It was cheaper than the initial $10,000, but it was the same amount for both buildings, so I'm kind of hoping he'll do something close to that amount for our district, because.
It was 7,800 per school.
Right, so, but if he's doing the training separately, then.
Then that makes quite a difference.
But, so we just need to bring it all back together, so we should know before, um, that December 2nd meeting, what the new amount is.
All right, cool. Uh, joint loss.
Oh, we don't have a meeting until January.
All right, and that brings us to citizens' comments, Anne, you want to run the.
Well, do you have anything? Karen Thompson, do you have anything?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
All set, thank you.
Okay, good, it's all set. Debbie did say there is a way we can conference sign up, works on the phone, I just tried it, it's not as intuitive as the desktop. Teresa's all set, Sean's all set, Madison, do you have anything? April, April's all set, so I think everyone's all set.
All right. Of course, of course you can.
Going back to the digital soundage, one other thing that I, the parents who would like to help is we need to have a full funding phase, because I know Karen, I'm gonna be the one to do it best in the whole. So, you know, whoever wants to contribute, $10, $20, I just, a lot.
Yep.
So I know as a parent, that's something I would like to be part of.
Okay, cool.
Excellent.
Andre is. Fine, that's actually a great idea.
Yeah, absolutely. All righty, um.
Now, don't say it.
I have to ask, do you have non-publics? Just one, a little brief, I have some letters, uh, for the board, that's it. All right, then we need a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make the motion.
A motion in a second, roll call.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Reluctantly.
I know, do your mic.
Yes.
He said brief, though.
I know.